Okay. I call the order, open, closed session meeting July 28th at 2025.
Time is?
It's 4:33.
4:33. Madam Clerk, can you do a roll call?
Councilmember Beaver.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Woolsey.
Here.
Mayor Proton Venable.
Here.
Absent from this meeting is Mayor Thorpe.
Uh, is there any speakers for?
We have no public comments.
Okay. I'll move to closed session and the time is? 4:33.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Call this, uh, regularly scheduled council meeting to order for the successor agency housing authority for July 28th, 2025, current time, 6:03. With that, could I have Pastor Richie Olend, Olend Richie, come to, uh, do the invocation, followed by our captain for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Let's pray. God, thanks for the opportunity to gather in this place, uh, to do the business of our city, um, to courageously gather and to hear the concerns, um, that will be voiced over these next several hours. God, I pray that in this time that you would settle your peace over this building. God, that you would give these five people and the, the ones that support them incredible wisdom, that they would know the, the best things for our community, um, the way that, that, um, that we can succeed and that we can come together. And God, ultimately, that, that, um, your peace would, would guide us through this evening. Thanks for the opportunity to be here and we pray it all in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Please place your hand over your heart and face the flag, ready if you need.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Captain. Madam Clerk, do you call roll, please?
Councilmember Beaver.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Woolsey.
Here.
Mayor Proton Venable.
Here.
Mayor Thorpe.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor. On item C, the city council gave direction by consensus. There's no other reportable action out of today's closed session, although I would note that the city council did not complete its discussion on item E and will be going back into closed session at the conclusion of the open session.
Thank you, sir. Madam, in turn, City Manager?
No changes to the agenda.
All right, thank you. With that, it's going to bring us to our special presentations. I'm going to read something real quick. We are losing our captain.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor. I did, uh, changes to the agenda. I did want to pull two items.
Okay.
Two and four.
We, when we get to consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped again.
It's okay. Okay. Uh, we are losing Captain Walker. So we are going to get someone else. Captain Walker is going to be moving to another assignment. I'm going to read something real quick about our captain. He's been awesome to work with here in the city and we've really enjoyed having him here. Uh, he started here in the city as our captain on, uh, March 25th. He started his career working at Glen Helen Jail, worked the Big Bear Station, Central Station, homicide, internal affairs, Morongo Station, then here to Ucaipa. Captain Walker's hometown approach to policing the city has been instrumental in the development and implementation of the Home Lake Strategic Plan, adding additional school resource officer and a command over several critical incidents such as, uh, some floods and fires. Captain Walker, you're greatly going to be missed by this council and our city staff. Thank you for your, your dedication and service and involvement here. Um, we want to have you come up and give you a little presentation, but there's also someone else that wants to say something about you. And I think, uh, Callie, if you want to come on up? And then we were going to present you with something at the end of that and take a picture with you if you don't mind.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council and my colleagues in the city. Uh, I would, it's always a pleasure to be here, but not today. I am, uh, just really sad to see Captain Walker be moved. If I had any pull with the sheriff or could camp on his doorstep, I would. Uh, he's been an incredible leader and has accomplished so much in a short time. And I wanted to thank you, Captain. Uh, it makes me, it makes me a little emotional because your partnership has meant the world to our students. So in this community, you have, uh, helped us with so many different things and just allowing us to be, uh, such, um, tight partners where we could work through so many issues together and, um, benefit from your leadership. And I have definitely benefited from your leadership. You are, um, a, a soft spoken, strong leader, and I admire that so much. Um, you're very forthright even in your soft spokenness, and it's just an amazing way to lead. And so I valued watching you and hope to, uh, emulate some of that and of course wish you the best. I would remind you though, that you started at Cala Mesa Elementary and with those roots, they cannot be taken out. And so, uh, just want to have the opportunity to thank you personally and on behalf of our district and as a community member, I really appreciate the way you have responded to all the different policing issues, we'll call them, or problem solving opportunities for you. It's just, uh, it's been a great feeling as a community member. And just so you don't forget, I have the YHS football game scheduled for you to put on your refrigerator and a hat. Thank you, Mayor.
Captain, could you come on up here and give a round of applause? Captain. On behalf of City Council, our new challenge point, I know that you're here. Anything? We're here for you. Appreciate you. Okay. Next, that brings us to a presentation by Ucaipa Valley Water District.
Great, good evening. Uh, my name is Joe Zoba. It's an honor to, uh, to be here before you this evening. Uh, we had a chance to, uh, have a tour of some of our facilities recently and then we were, out of that tour, we were requested to come by and provide a quick overview of some of the activities of the Ucaipa Valley Water District. And I, I think the important thing for us to share with you is one of the questions I've seen a lot on the council meetings is, is there enough water for new development? And I, I wanted to tackle that straight off and I thought I'd do it in a little different way. I thought I'd show some comparative, uh, water volumes from other communities compared to Ucaipa to give you a little bit of a sense as to what we've been doing and where we're at. This first chart is for the, uh, Rialto Colton Basin, out past the 215, west of the 215. Um, and that the chart, what that shows is that's a volume of water in that basin. So there's a calculation separating out all of soil particles and how much water is between all of the soil particles. And you can see this ranges from 1977 to 2024. And then about 1987, that's when the base, this basin in particular, was most full. And then since then, it, it's dropped significantly over time. This is adjudicated basin. There's a court, uh, decree over this basin and it's hit a level so low now that the agencies in that area have been restricted from pumping. They can only pump half as much water as they have been, uh, historically. So you, you haven't heard a whole lot about this, but, but this is one of the issues that's happening in the, uh, local water area. As we move further east, we get into the, uh, uh, San Bernardino Basin area. This will cover everything from San Bernardino, Loma Linda, uh, Redlands, uh, Highland as well. This basin has a, a similar history as well. At, at some points in time, this goes back to 1935. At some point in time, when you see those high water levels, that's when things were flooding actually down in San Bernardino. Basements were being flooded. The water level was so high that some of the buildings down there had some issues. Um, and then down, it, it drops down to, in 2024. The last chart I showed you, if you take the high and the low, you could say that that Rialto Colton Basin is about 5% of, from where it was the highest to where it is the lowest. If you take the highest in this basin and the lowest, this current level in 2024 is about 30%. So, so both basins, one was very low and then the second is, uh, doing a little bit better. Now, as we move further east, you get to the Ucaipa Basin and, and this is our story. Our, our story is from 1993. The data is from 1993 to 2024. And, uh, we're actually at a point where we're 100% full based on this data series. Our low was in, uh, 2003 and now we're, we're full. While we're 100% full on this data series, we want to get a little bit fuller. We want to go back to a level of 1950s to bring the water levels in this basin back up even further. And, and we're on our way, as you can see with this trajectory, droughts will bring it down a little bit and then when we get a good wet year, we're able to bring that level back up. Um, so we've been able to make a lot of progress. Every year we put, we, we satisfy all of our water demands and then we put an extra nine months of supply into the basin. And that's how we've been able to build that water level, uh, up over time. If, if the water's not level, if the water's not available from, uh, state water project sources and we have a drought, then that pauses that activity, but then we resume it and pick up from there. So what we end up doing is, uh, in terms of, uh, billions of gallons, we, we serve about 3.26 billion gallons a year. And, uh, this year we'll put in 1.63 billion into the Ucaipa Basin and then we'll have a project of point 2, point 82 billion gallons into the Beaumont Basin. So each one of these basins is continuing to fill. We consider that our, our local bank account in terms of water supply and, and our goal is to fill them back up as much as possible. Now, what keeps the water here is all of the faults. All of those earthquake faults, someday we will have the big one. We, we all need to be prepared as individuals as well as the community. But each one of those faults is what retains the water up in this basin instead of having it run back out and, and head down towards the ocean. So each one of these compartments, we utilize and we maximize the volume in each one of these to bring these levels up over time. Our strategy has been a, a really integrated strategy to, to integrate groundwater sources, imported water sources, local surface water sources, stormwater sources and recycled water. We've gotten to the point where we actually maximize all of these different water sources, um, put the right type of water to the right type of use. You've seen our purple pipe throughout the community. We're continuing to build that system. We have dual plum homes now that receive both water supplies, recycled water and drinking water. Um, and we've connected to the brine line. So we're now able to close the loop in the Ucaipa Valley, send out the minerals down to the Pacific Ocean and continue to reuse that, that water supply. Two of our big partners are the San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District in the north and the San Gregonio Pass Water Agency in the south. These are the, uh, two agencies that, that we utilize to import water from Northern California. This is a quick, quick view of our water supply, uh, network. You'll see some of the blank areas out into the west. That would be the Western Heights area and then through the central part is, uh, South Mesa. So we have to cross both of those mutual water companies. They protect their customers, uh, or they serve their customers and we, we serve ours. We can't serve in each other's service area. But the sewers a little differently. Sewer systems, we, we cover the entire valley. We're, we're capturing as much of the sewer as possible. We'll extend up into the north bench. We'll extend further out into the westerly portions of Ucaipa and that's becoming our next resource. That's our recycled water resource. So we want to capture as much of that as possible to not only clean the basin, but also capture that as again, a future, uh, water type. Our recycled system is one of our newest systems, uh, that it's continuing to expand. You can see a lot of activity there in the south. That's a lot of our dual plum home activity and you'll see something very similar to that up in the north bench area when the Casablanca Ranch and that project moves forward as well. Those will all be dual plum homes. We probably have one of the most elaborate, uh, filtration systems around. We utilize both particle filtration with microfiltration as well as molecular, uh, separation with the nano filtration membranes. This allows us to, to really pick and choose what molecules, uh, get into the drinking water supply and our goal is to remove as many of those molecules as possible. A lot of the long chain organic chemicals that come down through the state water project, we're able to capture those out. By comparison, other agencies decide to mix it up and add chlorine plus ammonia and those will bind to those long chain organic chemicals to make them inert in, in some respects. Our goal here in Ucaipa Valley is to actually remove those from the water supply, separate them out. They go into the recycled water supply and they get their use for irrigation purposes. So really, really unique, high tech, uh, facilities that, that we have here. Uh, they, we've had a lot of people from throughout the world visit our facilities here as one of the unique layouts in terms of configurations for water and sewer service. These are the microfiltration membranes that are currently, uh, in, in operation at the water plant. This is the reverse osmosis, our nano filtration system, similar to what you'd have as a desalinization plant along the coast. We have that desalting freshwater here in Ucaipa. Down at the wastewater plant, we have the same story. We have not only the, the recycled water process where we go through the typical sewer treatment plant, but at the very end of this facility, we added a drinking water facility. Not that it's drinking water, but the quality that comes off of it is just that, high, high quality water. So we hit the recycled water with microfiltration, followed by that same reverse osmosis. We're now, we just led a contract to expand this reverse osmosis system down at the plant where we'll get 100% of the recycled water treated with recycled, uh, treated with reverse osmosis. It'll be one of the highest quality, uh, recycled water systems in, uh, in Southern California. So we're very excited about moving that forward. So, so fast forward, the, the, the water plant replicates the sewer treatment plant on the back end, both producing very, very similar quality water, but two different uses, one for irrigation and then one for drinking. The recycled water system is continuing to move forward. We have our dual plum system and this is, I think, one of the, the key steps for development as it moves forward. And, and the dual plum homes where they have two water meters, we're now able to build four new houses for what one traditional house uses in terms of drinking water. So I live up in, in Whisper Ranch. What I use at, on a regular basis at my house, four new houses, because we, we tailor that outdoor irrigation for recycled water and just using the indoor water as drinking water, we're now developing out at a ratio of four to one, which is pretty amazing. You don't see that anywhere else in, in Southern California unless you're building a skyscraper and you have no, no irrigation. That's what it's very similar to. One item we talked about on the tour is this multiplier effect. I, I think Ucaipa Valley Water District offers something that I'll, I'll say pretty much no other water district provides. And, and this gets into the economic benefit of, of Ucaipa and Cala Mesa. What makes us unique is this multiplier effect. And what that is, is that's looking at the jobs that come in here. I know there's a lot of discussions on warehouses and, and to the type of businesses that come in. The multiplier effect essentially says that when you bring in a certain jobs, it brings with it additional salary factors. It brings with it additional jobs. What we've done is by putting in the brine line to the wastewater treatment plant, it's made our entire sewer collection system a brine line, um, potential. So down, if you connect to the San, uh, the LA County sanitation brine line, you have to locate along that pipeline. You locate your business along that pipeline, then you could discharge into the, the LA County sanitation line. There's another line that runs into Orange County called the Inland Empire Brine Line. Same thing, if you locate your business along that pipeline, you can connect to that pipeline and send your waste down through it. If you locate anywhere in Ucaipa Valley, in Ucaipa or Cala Mesa, you have that same benefit of, of as though you're locating along that really narrow, uh, system. Not too long ago, Sorenson Engineering had an opportunity and they were looking seriously at moving out of town. We explained this system to them, explained to them that, that where they are located now, they could polish their water for their process, end up with really high quality processed water, give us the salts that come off of it and we'll take care of that at the wastewater treatment plant. They understood straight away what we were talking about. They stayed in town and as you know, now they're expanding, uh, drastically. So this economic factor, you, you look at different types of, of facilities and we're trying to work really closely with both city staff members to, uh, or both city staffs to really get this process in because it's a really niche market that most inland empire areas can't, uh, compete with. They don't have the, uh, uh, the, the low costs of land that we have. They don't have the, the readily available labor that we have here in Southern California. And this becomes just a huge multiplier and economic benefit and economic engine for both Ucaipa and Cala Mesa. Here's another example of some of those businesses that, that, that you bring in one job and it brings in several other jobs. These are a couple of industries that actually would make benefit of this and, and I've reached out to a couple of, uh, realtors, commercial realtors down in the Encinitas, uh, San Diego, North San Diego area. The realtors down there, they get it. Some of those businesses get it as well. You're, you're talking about biotech manufacturing, medical supply manufacturing, water purification, uh, computer chip manufacturers, commercial laundry, food processing, beverage processing, electronic assembly and pharmaceuticals. With the, uh, the tariffs that are now in place in the United States, this is a prime opportunity for Ucaipa Valley to really take a step forward and bring in that type of business that is here for a long time. You can build a, a, a big business. You can build a warehouse type business, but you put this on the inside and it just makes a, a huge multiplier for the community. So that's part of my message. I wanted to share that with you today. Be happy to, to go into more detail about how that works and, and what is so unique about that. And I know working with Jennifer and the staff of, of course, as we do to, uh, to make sure that we can bring in the right, um, the right type of companies. With that, I really appreciate your time for the tour, the recent tour. And, um, if anyone in yourselves or staff or, or people, members of the community would like a tour, uh, just reach out to me. I'd be happy to set up the tour and provide that information. And with that, be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
I don't have any question, but I would like to make a comment. Nice to see the water board sitting on that side this time because I go to their meetings every time and it's always very interesting and informative. And like Joe said, you know, so many times we hear questions about, do we have enough water for the wine country, for the freeway corridor and for all of that? And I think he's answered that question that yes, we do. Um, I want to say a word about this tour. Uh, I did go on that tour and it was fantastic. It was so informative and they made it so fun that it was, uh, fun to hear about water. So anybody in the audience or anywhere, if you're really interested and really want to know what goes on with our water, set up a tour with them and take that. It'll be very informative.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Joe, thanks for coming tonight. And yes, I asked you to come, uh, I was impressed with the tour. Uh, clearly the technology of the microfiltration, the nano filtration and what I was impressed with how you guys have strategically planned over time and how you put that plan in action. I mean, I think you planned for 15 years ago of what you were going to do today and it came to fruition. Uh, and I thought that was extremely important. And then also the graphic that you put up of where everything hooks into. For example, if somebody's going to build a development and they got to hook into you and they have to check with you. They can't just hook into some water company. They have to check with you if you guys cover it. Isn't that correct?
Yes. Yeah. Unless you're in the mutual water companies, then, uh, you'll get water from them and sewer service from us.
So, uh, but I thought that your strategic planning was important and, and why did you take that tack so many years ago? Why, what was the importance of doing that?
Well, so I, so I started here as general manager in, uh, 1994 and, and at that point in time, uh, we had orange groves here in the Chapman Heights area. And we didn't have a lot of water. Our, our water levels at that point in time were, were dropping significantly. So, and we didn't have access to the state water project. We didn't have access to the state water project until 2002. Um, and I had a board, several board members in, in the 1990s that said, the only supply of water that, that grows over time is recycled water. And, and, and they were, they were key to getting that process started. Uh, we were one of the, uh, last agencies to go through the process with the state of California that actually allows us to remove water from Santa Montea Creek. We still have an obligation to keep the habitat alive, but now the rules are totally different. I, I don't think we could do today what we did over the last 30 years. So what, what got us to this point is making sure the community had a reliable supply, a sustainable supply. In 2008, we adopted a sustainability plan. We didn't take it off of the shelf. We didn't have consultants come in. Uh, the district staff and the board of directors sat down and we made sure that every house that gets built plays by the same rules, meaning that at that time, uh, a water supply assessment needed to be done for only houses, developments over 500 units. They had to bring in a 20-year supply. I was at a conference in, uh, Colorado and Colorado said, what do you mean 20 years? We require our developers to provide a, a supply in perpetuity. And, and we took that information and morphed it into a, a sustainability plan where every single house, if you build a single home or you build a thousand homes, each one of those homes before they build brings in a 20-year supply before they start taking water. And that's one of the other items. When you see the curve going up, it's new development bringing that water supply in, giving them a, a long-term supply for the future.
Thank you, Joe. And you, you have an excellent staff and a good board. Uh, you guys run good meetings over there. So thank you for your service and, uh, and the work you guys do for our community.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Good. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
All right. That brings us to our public safety update, starting with the police department.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before I get started, just make a quick, some quick remarks about my exit here. As the mayor stated, on, uh, August 9th, I'll be transferring down to our specialized investigations division. It's bittersweet. I said when I started here that I grew up here. Uh, this, this town has been great to my family, um, my parents, you know, the entire time we've been here. I really valued the relationships that I was able to build with Callie and her team, the school district and just throughout the community. This community, um, I had no doubt was going to be great to work in and, you know, they didn't let me down. It was awesome. Um, I really value my time here. I feel like it was cut a little short. I didn't want to leave, but you know, sometimes we don't get a say in the matter and I trust in God's plan for me, um, going forward. Thank you to all the city staff. Everyone here has been wonderful. They've really felt like, uh, like a partner every step of the way through the trials and tribulations and through the good times. Really, I feel like we have a good working team here and I know that Captain Webold will step right into his role and will continue that relationship. I know Lieutenant Scoville, um, also has a great relationship with the city and, you know, they'll hit the ground running. Hopefully, uh, he can exceed anything that I was ever able to accomplish here because I live here and I, and I really care about the community. But with that, like I said, thank you to everyone, um, that's supported me since I've been here. It's been awesome. And with that, we'll get in. And with that, we'll get into your June statistics for the police department. So in June, the police department had 3,189 calls for service. We averaged a three-minute response time to our emergency calls for service, and our peak calls kind of shifted this month of June from, to Sunday through Tuesday afternoons, which if you remember the last couple of meetings, it was more that mid-week afternoon timeframe. Our Part 1 crimes for the month of June, we had two robberies, 22 aggravated assaults, five burglaries, 19 theft-related calls, and two grand theft autos. Our arrests for the month of June, we had 75 arrests, 63 of which were adult bookings into our correctional facilities. Our most common arrests during June were narcotics-related offenses, domestic violence incidents, warrant arrests, and trespassing. Our traffic enforcement division, I want to give a disclaimer, we were a little depleted in the month of June, so that's why you see the kind of a drastic decline. One of our traffic officers got pulled away to assist with our mobile field force and all the demonstrations and protests going out throughout the county. So we were a little bit down, but nevertheless, our one traffic officer really held it down and tried to pick up as much slack as he could. He wrote 111 traffic citations, there was 30 traffic collision investigations, six DUIs, and then he also participated and planned and helped the school district with the graduation at the high school, which is year after year, no small feat, you know, trying to get everyone in and out of there safely. So really proud of them for that. And then our SOP team, the team handled 31 transient calls for service. There was 23 closed-out app submissions through the City of Ucaipa app, three subjects that they encountered during the month, accepted some form of assistance. The team conducted 40-plus park patrols and vacant property checks throughout the city. There was 22 business contacts, and then the team was able to update nine letters of agency, which are really important for us. There's new legislation as of January that all those letters of agency have to be notarized now, so it's a little bit more of a burdensome process for us, but the team has really tackled that and staying on top of that, so we have those on file. The team also met with several mobile home park managers to educate the managers on what the team can offer and what services they provide, and offer them any assistance and just, just to foster that good relationship, so they have someone to call and know where to go for, to get problems handled and addressed. And then Diana, she conducted a, I'll call it a drone reconnaissance operation throughout the city, using the code enforcement drone to try to locate any new encampments, homeless encampments throughout the city, no new ones were located, which is good news. And then with that, I will remind the city and the council that on August 5th is National Night Out. If you haven't been, it's a good time, lots of vendors and activities for the kids, it's just a good time to come out, meet your local police department, the schools, I know have a big representation out there, it's right before school starts, so that's, that's good, I'm sure. There's lots of questions for the administrators of the schools, but it's just a good time for everyone to come out, there should be food and things like that, and just a time for us to, to bond with the community and foster those great relationships. And with that, I would be glad to answer any questions you may have.
I know your report only goes through June, but you'll be gone when we get to July.
Yes.
So you want to elaborate a little bit on the efforts on the fireworks and reporting on the app about the fireworks and how we, I think we got a couple people?
Yeah, we did, we issued some citations, there was a full court press, if you will, to try to tackle the problem. I think without the numbers right in front of me, I think those will be reported next month, but what we saw with the educational material going out about the new fine system that, the days and weeks leading up to 4th of July and then afterwards, we saw a sharp decline over previous years. Even 4th of July itself, the day went relatively smooth with not a lot of fireworks calls. It wasn't until the fireworks, you know, the professional fireworks at the high school started going off that we saw just kind of an explosion throughout the city. I know code enforcement was out with the drone, we had several CAL FIRE, fire investigators out with us, and just a whole team of deputies, myself included, Trevor Benson was out there, really trying to saturate areas, locate people. I guess a credit to some of these folks, they were, they were being strategic about how they lit them off, which was different in years past where, you know, one would go off, an aerial firework would go off, and then it would go dark for a little while. And so it makes it very, much harder for us to track, track down where those were coming from. But overall, it's success, hope to build on that as the years go on, and I'll be sure to pass all that along to Captain Weebold, Lieutenant Scoville knows the efforts that were put in. So wasn't, didn't stop it completely, but we really put forth an effort to try. I know we were getting a lot of calls, a lot of app submissions at the time, and I think there's some things that we can fine-tune in our approach and our, the way we go about things next year, but it's a learning process. This is the first year with the app, so it was definitely beneficial, but I think there's some things that we can fine-tune to better address it next year.
No, I really appreciate it, and I think it, I think it did help. And after the fireworks show, I had some going off in my neighborhood, and I was determined I was going to be one of the ones to help find, I was that guy. I ran out and tried to find a couple people, and it seemed like once I got down the street, I know they didn't see me, but they just didn't light me more for probably a couple hours after that, so I wasn't able to pinpoint it, but, but we had a couple in the neighborhood that sounded like they're pretty good-sized mortars that were going off. But I know I heard a few people talk about, you know, at first, they didn't think they were going to take it serious and they were going to, you know, have enforcement and whatnot, but y'all did a great job, and I know it's difficult, it's trying to, you don't know where to hunt until you start seeing it, and then you go over there and it stops, it makes it a challenge, but pass on to everybody, we appreciate all their, their efforts and dedication to working on it, because I think it was, they did a good job. And it's, it was a big task, but I appreciate it. Council members, have any questions, comments?
I'd like to make a comment. Yes, thank you for your hard work, and I'm kind of like the mayor, I was in touch with Trevor texting in our area, because we have a really hotspot there, and so I was trying to do my part too. But I've had a lot of comments, not only from my district, but other districts in regards to how grateful everyone was for the effort that was put out there, and there were comments to the fact that our area was much quieter, some other areas said, oh, we were much noisier, you know, but I tried to relate to them that you guys were really out there working hard. And I do believe that we did make an impression on them. I'm sure you learned some things, and we're going to be out there next year doing the very same thing. And there was comments I read in social media about, well, it's just a way for the city to make money. Well, my reply to those people is, our only concern was to keep our homes and our families safe.
Yeah, Mike, great job on everything, and you know, we talked about chief to chief once about crime rates, how low it is, but we never can take full credit for that, because soon as you do that, it goes up, right? So, but you've really done a good job keeping crime rates down, especially Part 1 crimes, it's amazing. And I know you guys did get assigned, I think your lieutenant got on the mobile field force assignment too during the protesting out of our area, thank God we didn't have anything. So you guys have done a good job, even when you get pulled away for other assignments. And we're lucky to have you, you've done a great job for us, you have the right temperament, your relationship with the school district, especially when I was on the school board and we got to speak down at the School Board Association for the state, you did a wonderful job, and there were so many people that came up and said, how do you have that collaboration with the sheriff's department and your, and the schools? How do you guys do that? And folks talked to you, and they just got to know you, and they saw how it was done. It's just talking and working with each other and did a great job. And your support with the SRO programs for the schools was paramount to changing the paradigm that the high school wasn't safe for a while. We heard that a lot a few years ago with everything that had been happening, but Sheriff SROs did a great job, and that was under your leadership and Steve's leadership, we really appreciated that. But we're going to miss you. Now you're going to be over in homicide now, so we don't want to see you at all. Okay, you stay over there, as we don't want any homicides here, but knock on wood, but if so, we know it'll be investigated properly and you'll have your professionals here, but Ucaipa's always in your heart, we know that. But thank you, and good just off-duty seeing you at the events in town with your family, and you are part of us, and you know, but thank you for everything you did, you've been great. So I just want to say that cop to cop, thank you.
Thank you.
So I've always called you chief, because in my mind, obviously, the sheriff by contract is our chief of police, but you are figurehead, right? You're the head of our Ucaipa Police Department, so there's a small handful of people, maybe less than a handful, that can truly take credit for what we've seen in Ucaipa over the last several years, and you're certainly one of them, your leadership has stood out. The study that went out earlier this year that of cities in the state of California, between 50,000 and 100,000, Ucaipa is the safest city in California of like, of similar cities, ninth in the nation. It was not the case when I got elected here. Truly, I think your leadership has a huge part in that. So the fact that we were able to tout that we are the safest city in Ucaipa of similar sizes, that's huge. And we were in the top 50 when I got elected. So the work you have demanded of your officers, or your deputies rather, and the lead by example that you and your lieutenant give off is huge, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Homelessness has been, I think it's gone down like almost 80% since we started our Strategic Oriented Policing, which is a novel concept that has swept the region now. Again, thanks to your leadership and the outside-the-box thinking that we demanded of you, you hit the ground running when we asked of it. So like Councilman Miller said, I'm actually excited more that, I'm confident you will probably have a star on your collar here soon, so when you're the region chief of this area, you gotta, you have to show some favoritism to Ucaipa station when it comes time for that, so make sure Ucaipa gets everything we need and more. But congratulations, Captain, I know that, I knew it was only a matter of time that you wouldn't stay here for very long, because a rising star like yourself is going to go. So, but congratulations and thank you for everything over the years.
Thank you, appreciate that.
You're going to be missed, very much, you know, I mean, for somebody to be raised here in Ucaipa, we, you got us to that higher standard, that it's going to be tough to follow in your footsteps and stuff, but you know, we appreciate everything you've done for us.
Thank you, thank you. And I still live here, so it's not goodbye, it's just see you later. If you see me at the gas station in my sweatpants now?
Well, if you ever need anything, you know, you can reach out to us.
Yes, sir.
If we never do anything for you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, thank you.
Moving to the fire department. Are you, are you pinch hitting? All right.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council, I'll be filling in for Chief Malinowski today, who's on vacation. This is the stats for the month of June. So Station 1 had 311 calls, Station 2 had 214, and Station 3 had 313 calls. Over this last month, there's been a 3% increase in our calls for service with the fire department. Our largest call is obviously medical aid at 631, with traffic collisions at 47. Let me back that up. And the total calls for service for June was 838. Here's one of the calls for service that the firefighters went to, two-vehicle collision into an occupied dwelling. They also went to the Smiley Fire and assisted with that. A little shout out to one of our firefighters here in town, Jessica Ochoa, she transitioned from a firefighter/paramedic to a fire investigator with CAL FIRE, and is now going to be stationed here in Ucaipa. So it's good stuff, having our own firefighters and our own paramedics who went through the academy and are transitioning through that period. She's actually an FTO here in Ucaipa, so it's real good for our community. Flag day 2025, good photo up there. We had dozens of flags donated and disposed of properly, I think it's an honorable thing to do, I'm glad we were able to accomplish that. Some fire prevention projects, Chief Malinowski issued and updated some slope standards, he also issued the first emergency responder radio coverage standard here in Ucaipa. It's a new law that mandates specific buildings of specific construction materials have to have radio repeaters for public safety placed into them. One of the first business or buildings here in Ucaipa that's going to have that is going to be a new building that's built at Crafton Hills. So this was the first one, as well as he was recognized by the Inland Empire Fire Safe Alliance for his efforts in the community fire safety during the annual award ceremony. Some projects, we submitted a $100,000 grant from Sam Manuel Cares to replace some SCBAs. Go Live and transferred from County EPCR to CAL FIRE EPCR. EPCR is the database or computer program that the firefighters and paramedics use in order to intake patients out in the field and get that medical history and transfer that to the hospitals. So we went from a County EPCR to a CAL FIRE EPCR, which is a pretty hefty load. We also participated in the Crafton Hills College Biannual Paramedic Advisory Committee, and just as a side note, Chief Malinowski is a 14-year committee member. This committee makes sure that, you know, we have a, you know, presence within the firefighter and paramedic program at Crafton Hills, and gives us a great opportunity for recruitment. Some of the outreach that was presented went out to Healthy East Valley regarding fire hazard severity zones, and here's the flyer from that. We actually have a Fire Wise Community Meeting up in the North Bench next month, but we'll give you the report on that as it comes out. And that's the end of my report for the fire department, unless you have any questions.
I do not, Council? Questions, comments?
Nope.
All right.
I'm going to stay up here for code enforcement. Okay. We'll transition here into code enforcement. So here's the code enforcement statistics for 2025, June 2025. There were 44 new cases submitted, 16 of those 44 were resolved by the end of the month. The top cases are going to be overgrown vegetation, inoperable vehicles, trash and debris, and unpermitted construction. Speaking of inoperable vehicles, we're currently in the steps of dealing with some abandoned vehicles in town through the abandoned vehicle abatement program, which you all passed and voted a couple months ago, gave us the tools to do that, so I appreciate it, we're going through that right now. As far as inspection activity, there were 59 inspections. Of those 59 inspections, 38 were closed out, a total of $8,900 was received in citation fees. There were no new mobile home park cases opened, however, four comprehensive mobile home park inspections were completed at one mobile home park. There was one poultry ranch inspections with no violations, and a notable element that three properties were approved for fine forgiveness program during this month. And you'll see that here in some of the next slides. I want to do a case highlight on a code enforcement case at 32323 Kentucky. Some of you might remember this, this is a case that was brought up at a town hall we had up at the Y-PAC, a bunch of community members spoke up and called out our previous city manager, Chris Mann, about this property and some of the things that the community felt that we should have been doing about this property. It kind of first went on his radar and my radar at that time. Since that time, we transitioned it from city code enforcement into a SOP investigation, and here's some of the highlights of that. The case highlight is a, it was a red-tagged and unsecured property, and it's been in an open code case since 2017. Multiple violations, including trash and debris, inoperable vehicles, broken windows, people living in the backyard, transients hanging out, I know for sure, we've recovered multiple stolen vehicles there. Over 100 citations have been issued to this property since 2017, with continuous complaints from the neighbors throughout the years. Multiple calls to the sheriff's department, and SOP took the case over in 2024. In 7/15/2024, they did their first inspection and made contact with the tenant, who is the deceased property owner's son. Very close after that initial inspection on the 15th, on the 22nd, the tenant signed a contract with the property owner, with the property, with a buyer. On the 29th, the front property was boarded up and cleanup began, and throughout this, the next couple years, or couple months, we went through an eviction process, a sheriff's lockout, and just recently, escrow closed and new owners began to clean up the property as of last month. Here is some photographs of 32323 Kentucky before SOP took this and worked their magic. This is the front house, you can see the back doors booted in, it was really just a place for transients to hang out. This is the front house. You could see the um back doors booted in. Um it was really just a place for transients to hang out. And here is after. You see it's a posted property. It says very clearly there's new owners. Uh they cleaned out the front house. And there are multiple, I guess, transient camps within the the structure itself. And that's it. So it's been transferred to a new buyer. The new buyer is actually one of uh the neighbors. He purchased it for his mother, and um they're gonna fix it up. So the entire neighborhood down there is pretty happy. Uh they got some difficult people out, and it's gonna clean up the neighborhood. I have one more case highlight for you, and this is actually a fine forgiveness case. So one-three-two-two-nine-seventhplace. It was the first code enforcement case was opened in two thousand seventeen as an unpermitted land use involving uh the operation of a cat rescue or cattery. The owners had previously attempted to obtain permits for this but never finished and continued without permits. Over the years, multiple complaints from neighbors and workers about noise uh noise nuances and inhumane treatment of cats. Animal Control conducted multiple investigations but were unsuccessful in shutting them down. Because we had the fine forgiveness program, it gave us some tools to work on this. In April of twenty twenty five, the owners applied for the fine forgiveness program. Part of that was is we would forgive their fines, but they had to clean up their act. So in this case, they had to remove all of the cat cages, remove all the excess cats, um and do anything that, you know, they were in violation of. Uh Officer Rodriguez was able to confirm that all the cat operations had ceased, and the property owners also removed key structures that were part of the main source of the operations for the cattery. So here is uh some photographs from before. This is actually March twenty twenty five, just before fine forgiveness. Um and you can see there's shelters in place for different cats and um uh different buildings for them. And one of the largest building here on the right uh was removed as well as all of the small cat structures like this. So the cattery was shut down. Neighbors are happy, and the tenants are happy because they get their fines for it. So that's the end of my report, in case you have any unless you have any questions.
Good job. Thank you.
All right.
Counsel? Questions, comments?
All right.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, sir. All right, uh Madam Kirk, do you have any public comment?
We do. We will start with Richard Frost, followed by Dr. Hanson Wong.
Okay, and just a friendly reminder to those that are gonna speak, please speak into the microphone, use your uh address that uh you live at, please, and be mindful of the three-minute time limit. Richard Frost?
You have you have noticed how um the uh I guess the most accounting run libraries have security guards now. I know the one here, you know, Kyper Library, some of the librarians felt that when these uh when the school buses would come in and they all go to the library, that they were invaded by, you know, high school students or something. And also this last Fourth of July is the quietest I think I've ever heard. You know, in the past, it's been like a war zone, you know, latter Fourth of Julys, but um it's almost nothing um this last Fourth of July, so.
Dr. Hanson Wong, followed by Mary Ruder.
Hi, Hanson Wong, on Court Street in Ukaypa. Hoping you guys are having a great summer. Um there are some concerns expressed in the news mirror as well as some calls to me because of the clarity of some things that were mentioned uh by the last administration as far as the tax were concerned. Um when they were discussing the tax and promoting it, um both the Public Affairs and the City Manager had said, uh one of the things that would happen is that if we got the tax through, that we wouldn't have to cut services. Unfortunately, it was not really clear, and so some of the people feel that um the cuts to our uh some of our programs uh at the park, movies, concerts, and so on, are cuts in services that they felt was important to our youth, to our seniors, uh to our underserved. And if some way we can keep some of it, at least to um, you know, keep the kids off the streets and help the seniors and the um uh less affordable citizens of the city, uh it would be appreciated. So just something for you to think about when you're working out the budget. Uh I appreciate the way that you're focusing on the budget to, you know, get us in line and having a a better future with the budget. But again, uh part of what we do is to serve parts of the community that um can't really get some things themselves. Thank you.
Mary Ruder, followed by Chris Markarian.
Okay, Mary Ruder. Um I live at one-zero-zero-six-zero Carroll Drive in the North Bench. I'd like to I'm representing the Chamber of Commerce as usual. Um I'd like to start with a big thank you to Councilwoman Judy Woolsey um because she frequents uptown businesses. She comes, she purch- makes purchases, she buys her meals there frequently. And not only that, but she stalks, she ta- not stalks, she talks, she stops and talks to the business owners. And she asks, how can that council support your business? That is huge for small businesses, especially in uptown, because we're hurting right now. Um I have a couple of other things that I want to talk to the council about. First of all, I noticed that on the city calendar, um the the County Line Farmers Market um at the community center is highlighted. It's up there on the calendar. Well, the chamber is very happy about that because County Line is part of the Chamber of Commerce, and we appreciate that. What we'd like to know um is we would like to know, we would like for the council and the city to consider supporting some of our other local businesses and the Chamber of Commerce by posting our events on on the city calendar. And if there's a way that that could happen, we would appreciate knowing about it. Um the other concern we have is businesses on California Street, because that's where my business is, have reported that um the trash on California Street is frequently full and overflowing. There is trash on the sidewalk. I picked up trash on a regular basis in front of my business. Um and some of the business owners, one in particular, calls on a regular basis asking that the trash be picked up. So if there's a way that that can be dealt with, because there is there's trash coming out of the trash cans on California Street. So we would like that taken care of. Um the other thing that I'd like the council to know is that right now is, for some reason, this summer, um business sucks in uptown. It has really been tough for those small businesses. We have a brand-new restaurant that is struggling, um brand-new owners. And the chamber frequently hears from other business members that the city and the council doesn't care about uptown. Um that nothing is going on, our council people and our city people do not frequent the businesses uptown. So the chamber would like to ask, come and see us. You wanna know how you can help businesses, local businesses, mom-and-pop shops? Come, talk to us, ask us what we need. And I I'm gonna end with a commendation to the police officers, because I made a call this past week, and police officers were there within ten minutes. Thank you.
Chris Markarian.
Honorable Mayor, esteemed Mayor Protem, council members, and my beloved staff, I miss you guys. It's been a while since I've been back here. Chris Markarian, three-one-five-five-five Avenue E. I am humbled by the privilege to serve once again on the Economic Development Advisory Committee. We had our first meeting. It was a wonderful meeting, a lot of qualified, um a lot more uh involved people than I am, a lot smarter people than I am that are on this committee under the leadership of the the Miller family in one way or another. We have Ryan with us on there, and having served on EDAC in the past, I know the value that EDAC can bring to the city council. And I would like to ask this council for your consideration of our request to have, instead of quarterly meetings, allow us to meet once a month. Again, these are all volunteers. I don't think we're gonna get overtime or any extra commission uh for meeting more. We just wanna serve. And we have various industries involved in this committee right now. We have our school district involved. We have our college. We have our chamber involved. We have a lot of restaurants, real estate, financial institution, gas stations, uh um car wash businesses, and obviously, I'm a little involved in this town. I bring a numerous variety of organizations such as the Rotary Club and and Crafton Hills besides running the only law firm I think in our town um that deals at least with personal injury. And my goal has always been to bring professional services to our city. And um I got permission from my wife to get back in service of our city when she found out that Highland got the Costco instead of us. She was like, we gotta do something about it. Well, I'm like, this is America, and you get involved if you wanna do something, and here I am getting involved again. It's an honor and privilege to serve among the colleagues that I have on EDAC. I ask for your consideration, especially since we have a tall order to review the city's strategic plan. Uh I don't think that's a task that we can do in four meetings in a year. We'd like to take that on. One of the things that I'd like to incorporate as the chairman of the committee this time around is to have every member give us a report from their specific industry. So then the city council can get a better picture of the economic status of our city and the things that we can do about it. So I appreciate, and I again humbled by the opportunity to serve as I see most of you guys everywhere I hang out, and and we love this city. And I wanna echo the thanks and congratulations, Captain. As someone who holds law enforcement officers accountable, you've been an absolute professional, and and losing you is is a loss to us, but a gain to you. And we wanna see professionals like you grow in the law enforcement field and maintain these safe, beautiful cities. So thank you so much for your time.
I have one more card, but we'll listen to that item when we get to the to the item on the agenda.
Perfect. Thank you, ma'am. Any members of my uh colleagues up here have any conflicts of interest they wish to disclose at this time? No? Hearing seeing none?
So, Mr. Mayor, for item number seven on the consent agenda, I will have to recuse as I'm a property owner within the taxable area for that levy.
Okay. Anything else? No? Yes? Okay. Um with that, on the consent agenda, are there any items that wanna be removed for discussion?
Yes, I'd like to pull two and four.
Anybody else? Okay, do I have a motion to accept the agenda minus, or consent agenda minus items two and four?
Move to approve the consent agenda minus items two and four.
I'll second that.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number two.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The subject on this item is the resolution authorizing the mayor to take action on legislative matters when full council consideration is infeasible. The California legislate legislature frequently passes laws that impact cities affecting funding, land use, public safety, and operations. Ukaypa actively engages in advocacy efforts, often partnering with organizations like the Ke- League of California Cities. Traditionally, the city council takes formal positions during a regular city council member or council meeting. However, urgent legislative issues can arise with little to no notice, making it difficult for council, full council to act in time. For an example, in April, we had two Cal City Action Alerts that came. One was AB six fifty with uh Rena allocations. It was a two-day turnaround. And there was SB six thirty-four, which dealt with homelessness and criminal penalties, which had a ninety turnaround. The city council meeting was on April twenty eighth, which fell outside um the opportunity for council to give us direction to send a letter of support or opposition. Without a mechanism for rapid response, the city risks missing key advocacy opportunities. To address, the staff is proposing um a resolution that authorizes the mayor to act on behalf of the city when urgent legislative matters arise. The key points highlighted in the resolution grants the mayor to issue the letter of support or opposi- opposition or engage in advocacy when council can't meet in time. The actions must align with past council positions and city league priorities. Applies only in time-sensitive situations, and all actions will be reported back to council at the next city council meeting. This ensures that the city can respond quickly while preserving council oversight. The recommendation is that you adopt the resolution before you this evening, authorizing the mayor to take action on these matters. That's all I have unless you have any other questions.
Okay, um I know we talked about this 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 morning. Uh when I first read it, I was concerned about it. Uh and then we talked, and I thought, okay, you know, maybe because of the urgency thing. But uh after I got home, I got to thinking about it some more. And um I just feel like, you know, in the legislature uh business, I I'm kind of a political junkie. I like to follow this stuff. And there's so many times when uh whether it's state or federal, you go to bed at night thinking, okay, they got the votes, it's gonna pass. You get up the next morning, and at one or two o'clock in the morning, something changed. So um I just feel like that I realize that um reviewing, having the council review it and everything uh could be after the fact. But I just don't think this falls on the responsibility of one person. Nothing against you, Mr. Mayor. But um I just think it's something that the full council should be involved in.
I I appreciate that. And and just know from my seat isn't isn't something that I'm looking for. I think it was just put there as a placeholder to show how it could be done. But um I did bring up the concern that, you know, whoever is mayor, whoever would be in this position, if they authorize some sort of a letter in support or opposition to whatever the topic may be, and then come back later, maybe the council didn't have that desire for that. Um so I think if we were to have something like this, then there would have to be some we could have a di- a dialogue, a conversation about specific parameters. Or the alternative is if we don't have something, then it's just one of those things where we don't get a dog in that fight, whatever that particular fight is, because we may miss out on it. And then that is something that has come up in the past, um where, you know, it could it could happen tomorrow, right? So we find out something on Wednesday, and by Monday, we have to have a a letter out. And by the following Monday when we meet, it's too late, they've already voted on it, or they've already considered any other points of view. So. Um and there may be some topics that we feel are important, and we may wanna weigh on them. We may miss out on that. So I don't mind going either way, but I think if if it's something we want to uh think about, we might wanna put some parameters in there so that there's some check balances in place. And I don't know if the city attorney has some ideas of parameters on how to 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 do this. I mean, I I can't I can't call the the council members and, you know, and find out from them independently, you know, um hey.
No, you can't do that, man.
So that would be a that'd be a violation. So I don't know what kind of parameters we could put in place.
Yeah, you know, the the issue that you're facing is the one that's likely to come up here in the next few months. You get to the end of the legislative session up in Sacramento, a lot of things start happening. As Councilmember Woolsey said, you go to sleep one night, and you wake up, and you have a completely different bill. Uh the legislature did that last year with AB ninety-eight, uh where they just had a complete bill pop out of nowhere uh that dramatically affected city's land use authority. Um and you know, cities wanted to be able to get their opinion in on that. Um but during the summer is also typically the time when most city councils have fewer meetings. Um and so it's it's kind of hard to react on that timeframe. You know, to to the mayor's point about, you know, can you have some parameters? Typically, that's the parameters are usually set by the city's legislative platform. So the city adopt, not to stir up anything here, uh but typically, the cities uh do have that authority, have adopted a legislative platform that says we
authority, have adopted a legislative platform that says, we support local land use control, right? And so, you know, regardless of what exactly the issue is, if there's something in the legislature that's attempting to reduce our local land use control, recently that's been about housing matters, right? Or environmental matters, then the mayor would be authorized to send a letter that is in opposition to that simply because it is attempting to reduce the city's local land use powers. At the end of the day, it's really a question of policy preference for the council. It's the council that expresses its opinion on these matters. You can delegate that authority to the mayor, you can delegate that authority to someone else if you want, or you can keep that with yourself and simply accept the fact that there will occasionally be circumstances where there may be a short amount of time to take a position on something and logistically, we can't get the council together for that purpose. And if you accept that, then you, I think it's very easy to maintain control at the council level. If you think it's very important that we get the city's opinion out there on every single matter, I think you need to give yourself a little bit more flexibility and delegate that to the mayor with some guidance or restrictions.
Now, we're pretty much ready available when you call us and if we don't get ahold of you, I mean, if we don't answer at that moment, we usually call you back, right? I mean, is there a way that we can get an email out to all of us? You guys contact us saying, hey, we sent you an email, we need this urgent matter?
We absolutely could do that. Courts have looked at that as essentially a serial meeting, Mayor Protam. They would look at that as likely a violation of the Brown Act. Relatively, you know, it seems kind of harmless on its face. However, when you're talking about the city taking a public position on something, you know, there may be members of the public that want to talk to you about that position. So doing it by email is quick, we could certainly get it done, but I think that you'd find that that would likely violate the provisions of the Brown Act.
I think if you're sitting in the center chair, you should execute the policies that the council has set forth and if that means you need to sign a letter to oppose some foolishness that the state is trying to push through, then that's why you are elected by your colleagues to sit in that center chair. So I support agenda, item number two. Councilmember Miller? I think I just realized I passed you.
No, I, there's great arguments on both sides. I mean, I would assume this rarely happens, city manager, correct?
It's not often, but there's been some instances that there has. Typically, we'd like to bring it before our city council to get the full buy-in and community input and to let the public know what's going on in Sacramento. But when we have the instances where we can't get to you and we know it's something within the area that you care about, crime, Rena numbers, making sure Sacramento doesn't put their fingers in the city of U K I P A, I think we're kind of clear on what matters to you as electeds as you voice your issues to us. Those are the items that we would want to get before you to sign so it can go up to our representatives.
Well, as long as I think the way the staff reports, it's a case-by-case basis specifically, you know, I'll be honest with you, you know, we get these, League of City alerts a lot of times where we can respond up individually of what we feel, because they want us to support something and we can read through it and then we can respond as a council member to push our legislate, whoever our representative is or whoever put the bill up, to respond that way. And that's one way you can do it. Another way is, you know, there is an argument to say that our mayor should have, if we've appointed them as mayor, to have some, you know, some leeway case-by-case basis if there's a timing issue for us and it's an issue that we've agreed to on policy that we will fight or that we agree to or support, that we should let the mayor do that and give them the confidence to do that on a case-by-case limited basis. But there has to be some parameters where it doesn't get out of control, nothing against mayor, but, you know, we switch mayors every year. So I don't know how to codify that, that it's case-by-case, you know, it's not something that, you know, it sounds kind of wishy-washy the way I'm saying this, but we just have to be really careful with this because we would want the whole council, normally most of the time, making the decisions on what we're going to send in opposition or in support of. So I would say limited case-by-case I could support, but not a, you know.
I believe the resolution kind of highlights, you know, the authorization, the guidelines and limitations in reporting. If you feel like there needs to be more added to the resolution, but I kind of feel like it's addressing what you're concerned about.
Let me read it, read it to me one more time because I didn't, I didn't think it really drilled down on it, but maybe you could read that section, please.
It's on page 102 of the staff report. The mayor may issue letters of support, opposition or engage in advocacy when council can't meet in time. The guidelines, actions must align with past council positions and city league priorities. Only applies in time-sensitive situations to where you're not going to have a meeting before they need the letter of support or opposition and all actions will be reported at the next council meeting. So you're going to not only see the letter, you're going to have a staff report detailing if anything went out in between meetings.
Can I real quick cut in? Is there a way that we can, obviously another, another elected is going to know that the mayor has signed something before this council does. Is there a way that we can be notified? Not a request for support, but rather for your information, your mayor just signed this and was sent to this Sacramento.
Absolutely. We can put that to you in an email and put it in your box.
That way, should the council be so concerned with what just happened that we can immediately reach out to the interim and say, we need to have, from my seat, I don't like this. I think this needs to be immediately brought before the council. We need to call an emergency special meeting.
And, you know, I think that that reporting to the council is the ultimate check on this power. You know, if the council sees the letter and says, you know what, we want to rescind this, you can make a motion to rescind it and send a rescission letter. You can have that conversation with the mayor here in public about the letter that was sent and what you all think about it. And so I think that that, having that transparency, having that conversation on every letter that comes out, you have that report back to the council. I think that is your ultimate sort of accountability on this relatively limited ability of the mayor.
Mayor, is it possible, as we're talking about this, to get some agreement with that parameter in there that we could agree to do it then, under them parameters? What our city manager read and that there would be a report to us of what was sent and that we could, well, there is a possibility to rescind it if we didn't agree on it the next meeting. Is that advisable?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Workable?
Okay, but if we rescind it and it's already been voted on and passed, what good does rescinding do other than just make a statement that we don't agree with it even though we agreed with it?
Councilmember Woolsey, I agree with what you said. I mean, you could say, I would think this is rarely going to happen, but I never want to say never, you know, because something will happen now. But I, this rarely is going to happen, I think. Most of the time, we're going to be able to do it in a meeting, I think. But if we put these kind of parameters on it that we do have some redress later, if we, you know, if there was three of us or four of us that say, you know, I really should, we should have sent that one and then we would have some public recourse on it, we could say, you know what? But I doubt seriously that would happen, but, you know, I'm going to trust that the mayor is going to make a good decision and then we'll be notified of what was said or what was sent up.
I think it even gives us even more of a reason to carefully decide who our next mayor is year over year and not just a rotational. Some cities are, it's by statute of rotation. District four will follow district five and it's just by that. If we're going to venture down this road by giving the mayor, whoever that is in the city, a little bit more authority to represent the council, then we as council need to be very careful who we cast our vote for to represent us when we are not in session. Not just the city as this figurehead preside over meetings, obviously, but also the one who represents the city as a whole from the office of mayor, but now represents the council when we are not in session for limited legislative actions for the, to represent us to the state, we have better be careful who we make sure we put in there because that is where we get the concern, right? So make sure you're casting your vote for the person who you think is going to be most responsible and careful with your, with your representation.
All right, so.
And I'll second his motion.
So you made the motion? Okay. So I've got a first and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Oppose. I'm opposing based on my principle that I expressed.
Okay. Four to one. All right. Thank you, ma'am. All right, so now we're moving to item number four.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Item number four is regarding an award of contract for the, a contract that involves the demolition of residential structures to support the construction of capital improvement program projects. The two structures that are the subject of this report are both located along Avenue E and are, the demolition will support the construction of the roundabout intersection improvements at Avenue E and Fourth Street and Avenue E and Fifth Street. Those properties were acquired for the project. It was an opportunity acquisition where the city was able to purchase the entire property and the residential structure on the property and the structures themselves are going to directly conflict with the proposed improvements. And as a result, staff is, went out to bid with the demolition contract for these structures. And just to show the council and the public where what we're referring to, on the screen before you is the north, the northwest intersection of Avenue E and Fifth. And as you can see, the, in the line work, you can see the proposed sidewalk location and the roundabout improvements and the yellow represents the existing home or the structure that is on that property. And similarly, on, at this southeast corner of Fourth Street and Avenue E, this shows the improvements and a corner of that structure that is in conflict with the proposed improvements. Again, this, with the approval of this contract, the demolition will occur and the properties will be cleaned up and we hope to return the city council at a future meeting with a recommendation regarding the disposition and the sale of the properties. These two properties along with a few other properties that are part of the Avenue E project.
Okay, I pulled this for a couple of reasons. We're going to get real familiar for me because you know this is a thing with me because four of these are in my district and I get quizzed all the time, you know, about when are they going to do something, what's going on? So we did declare this, we declared this property a surplus about a month ago, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I understand that once it's declared, there's a 60-day waiting period HUD or agencies like that have to be notified. Has that been done?
That has been initiated, yes.
Okay, have we received any bids or anything on that yet?
No feedback yet from, from that.
Okay, after the 60 days, then does it go out to the public? Will the public be notified?
After the 60 days, we will return the city council with a recommendation to move forward with the disposition and the sale and at that point, it will go out to the public.
Okay. I did ask last time and I just want to verify it and see what the process is. When and how do we get for sale signs put up on that, on those properties, all of them?
So we have, for other properties that the city has purchased, we have gone through that process where we post it publicly, but it really, it depends on when we come back to city council and get city council's direction and we will present different options at that point. So it'll really be at the preference of the council once we do come back.
Okay, and one last question. On any of these properties, has there been any bids at all that have been submitted over a period of months or anything?
The only bids that were received were for the demolition of the structures, but nothing regarding the potential sale of the properties.
Okay, and will the one on the corner of, the worst, the one that's in the worst shape, will that be the first one to go, be demolished?
They are in one contract, so from what the contracts have done in the past is that, you know, it takes a few days to complete the work, so I don't, at this point, I don't know which one will be first, but it'll be within a few days of each other.
Okay, is there any way that we can designate that that one has to be cleaned up first? It's the worst.
Yes, we can.
Okay, how can we do that? Do I, do we need to do something or what?
When, if the city council elects to award the contract, that's one of the first things that we'll mention to the contractor and we'll have that conversation with him in we call it a pre-construction meeting. I guess this would be a pre-demolition meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from my colleagues? No? Do I have a motion to accept the staff reporter's presentation?
So moved.
I'll second.
First and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Item number 14.
Good evening, Mayor, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. This item is the monthly report on the U K I P A app usage and this is going to be for the month of June 2025. So for the month of June, we had a total of 169 monthly users. We had 344 reported issues and once again, the top issue was streets. Streets, code and fireworks were the top three. The majority of the issues, again, were related to the streets. Code enforcement issues came in a close second with 75 issues reported and illegal fireworks was a close third with 73 issues reported. Illegal fireworks, if you remember at the last city council meeting, we mentioned that we had just added the new feature to the app here, this little section here at the bottom. So we launched that on the U K I P A mobile app on June 19th. So from June 19th to the end of the month, we did receive a total of 73 reports and so I think that was pretty successful in that short period of time. We are going to be taking this down at some point. It won't be necessary to have the illegal fireworks report on the app year long, but we do look forward to bringing that back next year around this time and hopefully, as Captain Walker had mentioned earlier, we can improve on what we did this year. But that's all I have for you. If you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
How much has it gone up by using those apps? I mean, do you have a scale on, is it?
It's pretty, it's pretty consistent. So our total monthly users, going back to February, if you look at your staff report, page 199, so your total monthly users back in February, we were at 171, then we went to 152, we jumped up to 190, then we were at 175 in May and then 169 in June. So it varies a little bit. Issues submitted, again, going back to February, we were at 223, then we went down to 213, up to 241 in April, 251 in May, and then in June, we jumped up to 344. So we see a little bit of a variety. The one thing that is consistent is the number one issue that is always reported is streets. And that has been, I would say, since we've been doing this report for the last year and a half or so, it has been consistently streets.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a way that we can, I know that our fire department and our police department kind of report on response times. Is there a way, do we track, hey, it was reported at 10 o'clock in the morning and by 6 o'clock it was resolved or it was accepted? Or is there any way that we track that and can we maybe report on that next time as to kind of what that looks like to reassure our public that, hey, this is, this is a, not just a, hey, yeah, you submitted it, we'll get to it when we get to it. It's tracked, we see it, we are maybe communication with you, once you receive it, you'll know kind of what that looks like. Maybe include that in future updates?
Yes, absolutely. So I do receive a report, the report that I receive on a monthly basis, that's actually information that we do have already. We have average days to resolve the issue. That's not something that we've included in the past just because on some issues, for example, code enforcement issues, some things, code enforcement cases may stay open for a little bit longer and so sometimes it may affect the response time. So we haven't included that in the past, but I'd be happy to add that in going forward.
Even if we do a specific, if you're able to like streets specifically, I'm a big one, hey, I reported that pothole a few days ago and it's still there, something, something even as simple as that. Just streets are a big one, obviously, it's the most commonly reported issue. I'd like to see kind of what that looks like as far as our staff's response time to addressing those issues.
Yeah, absolutely. I can, I can tell you for the month of June, the average days responded, it says 1.9, specifically for streets, city issues.
Councilmember Miller? Councilwoman Woolsey?
Yes, in regards to taking the report, the fireworks off, I really think we should leave that on. We have a little area over in our area where about, especially on weekends, anywhere from about nine till 10:30, they just make their little statement and, you know, they do it quick enough that you can't pinpoint them down. We're trying, but I just think it needs to stay up there because it does happen. We're trying, but I just think it needs to stay up there because it does happen all year.
She touched on something I was going to ask you on, and what would be the reasoning for removing it? Just to clean it up, save money? What's the?
There's really no reason, just if we want to, you know, put something else there, if there's something else that we feel would be more beneficial at this time. But we could leave it up there as well.
The only, my only thought to it was, was consistency because come New Year's, we're going to be sitting, fireworks season again, or illegal firearms being fired, you know, fired in the area legally.
Yeah.
And when they start doing that, it may not be back on there yet. And people know, oh, it was there in the summertime, and they go look for it, they can't find it. And the next time, they are discouraged to report it because it's not consistently there.
Okay.
So I, I'm not saying that it has to be in that exact spot. I don't know if you put it depth further, I don't know how many options you can have on that wheel, or if we're running out of availability. But I'm just thinking of consistency so that they reported it in July, and then come January, we haven't put it up there yet, or into December, and someone starts letting off their summer stash that they hadn't lit yet, and the neighbor decides to report it and they can't find it.
Yeah, absolutely, definitely something we can leave up there. I just thought, you know, we can clean it up a little bit, but absolutely, you make a great point, and we can definitely leave it up there.
And this doesn't require any?
No, this is no action, this is just for informational purposes.
Anything else from my colleagues? All right, so I guess it takes us to item 15. It's also your item, correct?
Yes, that is correct. Okay, item number 15 is going to be the Economic Development Advisory Committee meeting dates. So tonight, we're asking that the City Council discuss the Economic Development Advisory Committee's request to meet on a monthly basis. You heard from Mr. Markarian earlier today. The EDAC held their first meeting on June 26th. They met here in the community meeting room. It was a very good meeting. I was fortunate to attend. We had a really great presentation from Ryan Miller. The community, the committee members were very excited, very eager to start meeting on a regular basis. Per the adopted resolution, Council's adopted resolution number 2025-01, it outlines that that committee shall meet on a quarterly basis. And the committee did request to meet on a, on a monthly basis. I think at some point, there was some discussion of maybe meeting on a weekly basis, but I think they, they were able to compromise and maybe meet on a monthly basis instead. So that is their request. I do plan on bringing back, before the year is over, I do plan on bringing back the resolution that talks about the procedures and rules for the conduct of commissions and committees. That is the resolution that specifies meeting dates, times, things like that. But for now, I think if Council could take action specifically just on the meeting dates and times for EDAC, I think that would be appropriate. And then we could discuss, this will be incorporated into the resolution when it comes back to you, and we can discuss those other items for the other committees then.
Thank you. I think it's encouraging to see that our folks are, says a lot about the people that are on there, want to get involved and really get down to work.
Absolutely, they're very excited.
I'm in support of it, but I don't know what my colleagues want to do, so, sir on my left. Any comments or concerns?
I think it's a good idea. If they, for some reason, decide they really don't have anything to meet about or anything, it can always be canceled. I know, I serve on the vector control, and I think we were supposed to have one and it got canceled. So, you know, I, I think, I'm fine with it.
Councilman Miller?
Yeah, I'll support it, as long as there's energy to do it, let's, let's do it.
Mayor Protem, anything?
I'm, I'm for it too.
Mr. Beaver?
I'm looking forward to monthly updates from our Economic Development Advisory Committee.
All right, so I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Sir, before you proceed with your action, I do have one public comment, if that's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Good.
Ms. Donna Snodgrass.
No, okay.
I wasn't trying to bully you out of your comment. If you want to speak, you're good.
Oh, now she's got it.
I knew I could get you up here.
Thank you, Donna Snodgrass, Walnut Grove Court. Chris Markarian and Anna actually covered everything that I was going to say anyway, but Chris asked me to stay and speak on the item. Chris was elected chair and I was elected vice chair. And the committee does have a lot of energy, believe it or not. During that very first meeting, we realized real quick that four times a year won't be enough for several reasons. The committee's so diverse with our backgrounds and what we bring to the committee, which includes retail, wholesale, real estate, law, restaurant, fuel stations, education. I'm, I'm the wholesale, wholesale person. And I realized real quick that I didn't know enough about anybody else's background or, or jobs, that, that I'm going to have to be educated on any issue that comes forward because we all have a different perspective and we come from everything completely different angles. We literally will surround an issue with all of our different opinions. And the quarterly meetings also would put us behind anything. If you expect reports or recommendations from this committee of any kind, quarterly meetings, you will have already made decisions on many, many things before we even get it and talk about it. So there's no possible way we could be making recommendations. And everybody's, the whole committee, it was unanimous to move it to monthly meetings. And it, it wasn't a well, maybe kind of yes vote either. It was very adamant for the, for the monthly meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
As a student of history, I just want to say I like your shirt. I know what it says, and I like it.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Ma'am, it's all yours.
Oh, thank you. Item number 16, the biennial review. On June 9th, you did conduct the biennial review. And on page 202 of the staff report, you advise, you approved some amendments to the ordinance and rules as it pertains to rent adjustments upon vacancy, pre-approval automatic pass-through of capital improvement cleanup language, selection of a resident representative, and several changes to provide clarification and conformity with state law. Based on your direction before you tonight is the redlined version of both the ordinance and the rules and where we made the changes and the clean versions. So at this time, I would recommend that the City Council approve the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 458 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ucaipa, California, amending and restating ordinance number 422 pertaining to chapter 1520 of Title 15 of the Ucaipa Municipal Code related to Mobile Home Rent Stabilization Program and adopt resolution number 2025-444. Based on your approval, we'll return at the next meeting of August 11th. It will be under consent for final adoption, and it will go into place 30 days after approval of the second reading. That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions, concerns from my, my colleagues or a motion?
Move approval.
Got a first by Councilman Beaver. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Perfect. Sarah, you're next.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council. Tonight, on behalf of Megan Wolf, I am presenting the memorial dedication policy for your review and approval. This policy establishes a formal program that allows residents to honor loved ones who have lived in Ucaipa by sponsoring a memorial bench or tree in public spaces. It outlines clear guidelines for both bench and tree dedications, including associated costs, placement, maintenance responsibilities, and sponsorship terms. All memorials will follow established city standards. The policy was reviewed and refined through multiple meetings with the Park and Recreation Commission, who ultimately recommended moving it forward for your consideration. It offers a meaningful way to recognize members of our community while enhancing public spaces. There is no financial impact associated with this recommendation, and this concludes my report, but I'm available for any questions on behalf of Megan. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions, concerns from my colleagues?
Move approval.
I'll second.
Got a first and a second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor, you, you all are on a roll, so don't let me stop you.
You just blew it, you said something about it.
So what we have here is an amendment to chapter 15, 5.13 of the Ucaipa Municipal Code related to food truck permits, specifically the section 513080, which includes the exceptions. We're proposing a cleanup of that section, one, to enhance readability. Currently, as it is written, legally it's sound. However, we've had a lot of questions about people trying to implement it, wanting to know when can they be exempt from the city's citywide food truck permitting requirement. Those exceptions continue to be special events. So if we have a city-approved special event permit, many of those which come to the council, food truck operations that are incorporated in that, you don't need to get a food truck permit separately. Second, a single food truck on private property for private purposes. If you're throwing a birthday party, you want to bring a food truck to, to feed your guests, that will be permitted. There is one change to the private property exception, and that is, we're proposing that they no longer be allowed to park, no longer be required to park on a paved surface. It's come up pretty repeatedly. You're having like a backyard sort of get-together, someone wants to have that, that truck available. So we, we are suggesting the removal of the paved surface requirement for that one. You will see in that subsection B and later in the subsection D, an addition regarding point-of-sale requirements. And that is going to be, although these entities will be exempt from the permit to get a food truck permit from the city, they will need to verify that they are putting the city of Ucaipa as their point-of-sale for their business. And this is to ensure that the sales tax revenue that is being generated within the city stays within the city. So you'll see that at various places. That was a recommendation of staff. See city-sponsored events on city property. So if we are holding a city event, we would invite food trucks. We're already going to be going through agreements with each of those vendors that will mimic the requirements of the permit. So it's duplicative, and it also makes it more challenging for us to bring in a lot of vendors for those single events, if they have to go through the permitting process. And the last one, and this is the sort of major addition, and this is responding to requests from several of our businesses, especially those operating in Uptown, that operate either tasting rooms, beer halls. They want to be able to offer sort of a rotating option of food trucks who will be parked adjacent to their business and will offer their customers sort of a, a food experience without having to have a full commercial kitchen operation at their tasting room. So what we are proposing here is that the host business, so that is the brick and mortar business that exists within our community, would apply for either an encroachment permit. So that is a permit that you get when you want to encroach into the public right-of-way or a license agreement, which would be a license to use city property other than the street. And that would allow them to operate sort of a rotating menu of, of food trucks. Those food trucks, as long as they are in compliance with the license agreement or encroachment permit, and that includes things like having insurance, having traffic control, having waste sanitation pickup, things like that. As long as they're in compliance with that, and as long as they have the point-of-sale set to the city of Ucaipa, they would be able to operate no more than 10 times per year in the city of Ucaipa without getting that permanent food truck permit. The host business would also need to be monitoring how many times these food trucks are coming, they'll need to be reporting that to the city. All of these, regardless, will still need to continue to have their county health permit, regardless of whether they, they're falling under one of the exceptions or not. So to summarize, we're responding to a need in our community. We're, we're getting requests from these brick and mortars businesses to allow for this type of activity to occur. And it should result in increased patronage of our local businesses, both the brick and mortars that are sponsoring it, as well as these food trucks who will be setting their point-of-sale to our city. Happy to answer any questions you may have, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, concerns for staff?
So just a point of clarification, I was one, at least one councilman who asked this to be brought forward, was for some questions that came up from businesses in my district, which is primarily the, the Uptown. And the way it was explained to me from some of the concerned businesses is, hey, I'm a business owner, I've met all the requirements the county has to host a food truck. The food trucks are licensed by the County Department of Public Health, they're insured, and yet you guys, you, the city of Ucaipa, make it almost impossible for them to operate a food truck without jumping through ridiculous hoops to come here one time a year. It's not cost-effective for the businesses, so they just don't come. So for example, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to speak about the businesses that spoke, they called me, but let's just say, for example, I'm setting up hypothetical. If Sore and Swine's Acres decided they wanted to host Yeasty Boys Bagels to come out, so you can buy a bagel and then put some delicious homemade jam on the bagel right there, under this new revised ordinance, she would, that would be allowed after, after Sore and Swine's pulled the encroachment permit and worked with the city to let us know, hey, I will be hosting food trucks for my business. Same thing with Hobbs and Spokes, Brucaipa, Suveg, The Tasting Room, any of our Uptowns that have a specialty in one area, but maybe would like to attract more patronage that a kitchen would, would attract. Certainly, you can go and buy jams or preserves from Sore and Swine's, but if there was an event host there, we also have some carbohydrates you can put on there, some toasted bagels and lox and cream cheese. Who knows, maybe Sore and Swine's increases their patronage that day. That was the reason I asked that this be revisited. Certainly, I think our intent when this was passed, goodness, was it last year? Maybe two years ago? It was a while ago, we, we had this food truck ordinance brought. It was, it was good. We had these pop-up fly-by-night food truck vendors, we had no clue they were, they were not licensed, they were not insured, and they certainly were not being inspected by the County Department of Public Health. That is what the intent of this was. Unfortunately, the commander's intent has been lost in translation, and our enforcers are very black and white. Nope, can't do it. I don't, I don't care what their intent was, this is the way I read the statute. Well, to our small businesses detriment. And so I think it's incumbent on us to ensure that the people who are paying taxes to, to the city, who are running small businesses, which is our lifeline, are taken care of and ensure that they can continue to flourish and attract more business, while still having, giving our code enforcement and our law, law enforcement the teeth to go after the ones that are unsafe, that might be spreading some kind of disease if they're unsanitary in their conditions. So I think, instead of just eliminating the statute altogether, revisiting it, cleaning it up and making it business-friendly is paramount. And so that is the reason I, that I asked that this be brought, because I, I was getting phone calls from people who were like, what in the world? When I have a food truck in front of my business, my sales double that night. And that, and then we just passed a sales tax revenue, we said, no, no, don't do that. We don't want you to double your sales tax. Not, no, you got to do it a different way. So that, that was the reason I, I asked this be brought from my seat. Back to you.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Protem, since we're on that side of the dais?
No, I'll just, I'll make a motion.
Okay, let's see what the other two have. Councilman Miller or Councilwoman Woolsey? Nothing? All right, so we have a motion on the floor? Do I have a second?
Seconded. I'll second. He motioned.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Okay, got a first and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Yeasty Boys Bagels, it's a local bagel truck. Mr. Matlock?
Well, I would love, I would love some bagels.
On the last one?
Yeah.
We already passed it, we're on 19. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, for letting me. Mr. White, I want to ask you one, we were talking, it just slipped me as we were talking. Point-of-sale on the food trucks, how do we know we're getting that? Thank you, Mayor.
This afternoon, we did have a discussion with both HDL and CDTFA on the different possibilities of, of how we capture that. Also had a, a, a learning session on potential leakage through that process. And so based on that education, we're going to work with our partners, vendors, to make sure that we tighten it up so that it gets reported the right way, so that when it goes through the state process, it does come back. But it is, it is a, a little more complicated than a, a simple answer. But it's, goes back to the way that the vendors report, especially when it comes to food trucks, because they, they could make, they do make sales not only in Ucaipa, but in Calamasa, in Redlands, all over the place. And so we want the Ucaipa sales to, Ucaipa to get the Ucaipa credit. And so that requires a, a certain way to, for those vendors to report their sales.
I would think the difficulty would be if it's cash-only. I'm trying to, I, I, you know, I don't know how you could do that, but we can figure that out later.
Yeah, enforcement is, is always going to be an issue. Cash-only businesses, there's, there's not a whole lot of paper trail for cash-only businesses, so that's always going to be an issue. But, but giving the benefit of the doubt to the vendors that they're, they're reporting everything correctly, charging the sales tax and remitting the sales tax correctly, the, the process for them reporting, there is a way for Ucaipa to keep the local sales tax in Ucaipa. there is a way for, um, Ucaipa to keep the local sales tax in Ucaipa.
Good. Okay.
All right.
Talk quick before we think of something else up here.
Yep, no, will do. All right, so this is a discussion on urgency ordinance and policy direction on, uh, fuel station and car washes in the city of Ucaipa. And this was requested by the city council at the June twenty-third, twenty, twenty-fifth meeting to come back at the following meeting. So I am here to present this. Um, just for kind of frame of reference for city council and the public. Um, for car washes, we have ten existing car washes and then two that are under construction. One that is almost ready for, uh, to open and one that is in the grading process right now, just along the same stretch of Long Oakland Road. And then in terms of fuel stations, we have, uh, fourteen existing fuel stations. We have three under construction. Uh, the one car wash that's almost done also is tied with a fuel station that's almost done. Another one that is, um, just started grading. And then the seven eleven over by the Bryant Street, uh, State of Brothers is also getting, uh, close to being done. And then the Ucaipa point does have a provision to either redevelop the mobile gas station or build another gas station next to it or another center. So it is a kind of approved, but we don't know exactly what will happen with that site in the future. And so, um, really, um, one thing for, as council notes, but certainly for members of public, is the cities do not pick which businesses occur, so we don't necessarily say, hey, we want another gas station here, we want a car wash here, and that's how we make it up, that's not our role. Uh, anyone can submit a project that they want to in the city of Ucaipa. And if it meets the development code, it can proceed, it goes through the review process. And if it meets all the checks and meets the findings for approval, then that's how it goes. And so it's all submitted through private development. Um, unless the city has provisions that say otherwise, that would restrict that approval. And so a moratorium was presented, uh, to city council in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-three. Um, ultimately did not move forward. Um, do want to note as part of the discussion, there's many different ways that council can, uh, can consider, um, this, urgency ordinance and moratorium, just want to note is a temporary pause on approvals. So if city council wants to amend the code in a particular direction, the moratorium just says, hey, we're gonna take a breather on any processing of projects or approvals in the meantime, while that code gets figured out. Um, and then certainly any direction that council wants to go in, uh, we can respond appropriately and, uh, happy to take direction from city council in which way you guys would like to go.
Thank you, sir. I didn't count them, so we have, with the ones that are in the pipeline that are about ready to go online to what we already have in place between car washes and gas stations, what is that, twenty?
Eighteen, uh, gas stations.
Okay, and what about?
Car washes will be twelve.
So I know one of my points way back when this first, like, first or second time it came up, I don't remember, but, um, I don't like moratoriums. However, I have people from the public come up and say things about we have more than enough gas stations, more enough, uh, car washes. And then we had that public survey that went out not too long ago. And there's a lot of comments in there from the public about that as well. Um, and I, I'm wondering if we have a moratorium. I don't know how this would work, Mr. City Attorney, but maybe we put a number, like, hey, you can only have capped out at so many car washes and so many, um, uh, gas stations. And then once you hit that number, we can't take anymore. If one closes, then we can entertain the idea of an applicant bringing back one later. Um, but I, I, I know this was brought to us before and, and I, I'm not big on moratoriums, but I, I do think we have quite the gamut covered when it comes to car washes and gas stations. That's just from my seat. Uh, I, I just, I, I don't like to tell people that they can't have that business, but I, I think we've got a pretty good representation of that style of business in our town. I'd like to see some other things. Um, but my colleagues, somebody have any questions or concerns?
Yes, so I brought this up in twenty twenty-one. And I thought it would be supported by the then council, and it was, I think I was on an island. I think I was the only, uh, vote and approval of this for the, for the same reasons that we're talking about now is, for every, first, firstly, I think the biggest one is you open up a, a restaurant and it fails to cha, to change, that's another successful business, it's not going to be that hard. You open a gas station, it's gonna be a gas station. To cha, to go back, maybe for me, or so who can maybe speak on this? There's, there's, from what we were told, the amount of environmental that goes into go, taking a gas station from once was to something else, the fuel, just the chemicals, all the stuff that has to be looked into. It's not as easy as it is just to go, oh, it was, it was Rosie's, but now it's Tom's Burgers. It's, it's, it's a lot. Uh, it's gonna be a gas station forever. We have a lot of gas stations. And for every time we put a gas station in, what are we missing? What, what other business that would really make Ucaipa a better place to live, work, visit and shop are we losing? I, I don't, I'm, not once have I ever pulled up a gas station and said, man, this line is ridiculous, I need to go, we don't have enough gas stations here. The, it's never that bad. I don't think I ever have to really wait for longer than maybe a minute or two, if, if it's really full. I, I, I think we, we could be serving our, our citizens better by, by entertaining builds and development of things that are more needed than a gas station and a, and a car wash. Now, I will say, if you go, been to the gas station slide, there you go. Look at, I guarantee, I bet you a lot of people in Forest Falls and Andrewsoaks and Mount Hill Village are really appreciative that there's a gas station on Bryant Street and Oakland Road. Because that's servicing a population outside of our community that, there's not, it's not one up really up there. The Boulevard, sure, but on that far north, the north, uh, east portion of our city, underserved by, uh, by a fuel station. So it would make more sense to need to entertain a development on a case-by-case basis of a gas station. Of saying, okay, generally, the city of Ucaipa will not entertain any further development of gas stations, unless you can demonstrate a benefit to the community and that there's not one a block away or next door. The Boulevard is a perfect example of that, was it five? I can literally stand in there and throw a rock at each one of those, and I'm a horrible pitcher, and I bet you I can hit every single one of those service stations. Doesn't make any sense, we're oversaturating our market. What else could have gone in those places? When seven eleven opened up, it's like, what in the world? There could have been so much better, that was a big piece of property up on that hill. That would have made a really nice restaurant, all kinds of stuff. But again, Ben said it, we don't, we don't submit, we don't choose who submits applications. Seven eleven, Taco Bell said they wanted to put a restaurant and a service station there. Okay, it's up to us to say, that doesn't make sense. That doesn't fit into our plan to make the city better. And so I agree with you, it's private property, the government should be talking about it, should do it, until we should, because it just doesn't make sense.
Yeah, and staff can't at the counter forcibly say, no, we can't take that application unless they open themselves to lawsuit. Now, I remember the first time I started coming into the city on a more regular basis before I moved here. Um, once you left the freeway, if you were low on gas, you better get gas, because once you got to the other end of town, you didn't know if you'd make it back down to the gas station. But we've swung the, the pendulum far to the other end. Um, but anyway, Mayor Proton, anything?
No, I think we talked about this and we covered. We covered all this in twenty twenty-three, I think, wasn't it?
Was that right?
Yeah, I think that we talked about that. So I think I'm, I'm still for the...
Councilman Miller, Councilman Woolsey?
Okay. Where is the urgency? What is the urgency in, as a threat to our public health, safety or welfare? Where's the urgency? And if you want to listen to public comments, which we're basically saying is social media, well, they're against fast food places, Mexican restaurants, tire shops, massage parlors, apartments, houses, warehouses. Um, it doesn't matter what kind of business it is, they're against it. When Trader Joe's was first, uh, publicized, well, we don't want Trader Joe's, we want Sprouts. So it doesn't matter, you know, as far as how many of this or that that you have. And the one thing that I had commented to me by, uh, several people that I've talked to about this is the term free enterprise. It refers to business activities that are not regulated by the government but are defined by a set of legal rules such as property rights, contracts and competitive bidding. The belief that government, uh, interference in business, uh, hampers economic growth. So I agree, I, I understand what you're saying, Justin, about once it's a, a filling station, it's a filling station. Uh, where other, like for instance, on the Boulevard, we have a lot of bank buildings that have been converted into things. But whoever decides to build that, uh, want to build that filling station, if they've got a couple of million dollars or whatever to spend to build that, that's, they're right.
I agree with you. Generally speaking, they don't live here, they don't have to endure the blight. We do, and we represent people who do. So it is, I think it is imperative that we, as the elected leaders of our city, listen to those people. Trader Joe's can be Sprouts when she, if, when and if Trader Joe's fails. And I would be willing to bet our economic development department would be easy, would find it easier to find a replacement for Trader Joe's than they would to try to find another fueling station. Granted, it'll be a fueling station, I'm certain another mobile, uh, British Petroleum seventy-six. Somebody's gonna come along and put a gas station there. I'm not, I'm not doubting that. But then we're still at the same place, whereas could that have better served our community? Could there have been a better economic interest? The urgency is there, there's no taxis, backseats. That's the urgency. It's gonna, it's gonna be there. And, and, and to your point, I'm quite certain Citibank is still vacant because of a giant vault in the basement that nobody's gonna touch. So we made that decision. Now, we're not, this isn't a radical concept to Ucaipa. When, we've had a moratorium, was it, uh, no, we don't allow new auto shops in the, in the uptown, is that right?
Yeah, so there are prohibitions on certain uses in specific areas of the city. So, uh, uptown does have restrictions on that and auto shops is one in particular.
Why?
Uh, because it is not congruent with the ambiance and the pedestrian atmosphere. It's not compatible with the environment.
Right there. It's not compatible, that is, this is, look, we did it. We have fueling stations. The city of Ucaipa has seen fit to approve, build, development, so that all of our citizens can have fuel when they need it. Got car, they're gonna have clean cars. But now, now it's time to we ensure that we have the ambiance of the community. They were not just a city of gas stations. We're not just that industrial city of fueling stations every other, every block. There's so much other things that can be developed, and I'm certain that they're out there. Who's got more money? Gas, gas is an industry. They have the money. I, I don't think we should litter, litter our city. The urgency is, I don't want to see the city littered with irreparable fueling stations that are gonna take decades to clean up.
When I took my orientation, I believed that the finance department was, uh, a pamphlet that I, or a book I have at home. Uh, it stated in there in regards to sales tax, that service stations provide a lot of sales tax. Correct, Phil?
Uh, yeah, the, a, a gallon of gas has a significant amount of, uh, sales tax. Um, there's a lot of taxes on, on gasoline, sales tax being one of them. So for, for our city, um, because we have so many, uh, fuel stations, it's a significant, um, sales tax revenue generator for us.
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Well, thank you, uh, great comments by everybody and good feedback. And I agree with, uh, uh, we do have a lot of car washes, there's no doubt about that, and service stations. But I, I'm, I'm taking a different tack on, um, I, I did, I did take some notes on this today, because I thought this might come up today. And, you know, when you have community concerns over issues, uh, do you have enough of these? Or do we have too much of this? Or is it a neighborhood concern? You know, them are case-by-case, um, issues that you can, you can have by updating your standards if you need to. But I, I'm always concerned by stopping an entire category of a business. Um, and, and a moratorium is kind of a, when you use that, it's a blunt instrument that a city can use. That's a, that's a serious blunt instrument is what I categorize this. And it really sends a message to our town that we may not be open to responsible investment, which we are trying to propagate through things we're trying to do with the freeway corridor, et cetera. So, um, you know, we want to have, we want to make sure we're open for business and that people that own property and they develop their property understand that we are, we are, um, friendly to a business climate. Um, you know, modern car washes, they're really not water intensive, they have re, uh, recycle systems now. Um, there are a general, they are a tax producer, if we're looking at some of the, uh, HDL reports that we received. Um, and you think about a car wash or, or a service station, will it go? Market demand's gonna, gonna tell you whether it's gonna work or not. And if you're gonna invest in something like that and you check there's plenty of car washes in that area, you're probably not gonna build one. Uh, you're just not gonna invest in it. So I think market demand is where we need to look at, uh, whether it's concerned enough. There's concern about traffics or aesthetics, how it looks, or, uh, or a number of facilities of a certain area. Our city, we do have tools in place right now. We have zoning, we use CUPs, conditional using permits. We have environmental reviews to do processes, right Ben? Uh, we evaluate each process, uh, project on its own merit, merits, uh, that will go before planning commission. So we do have tools if it becomes out of hand. But to merely just use a, a moratorium, that is, you know, that's a pretty serious instrument for us, especially when we're trying to encourage business. And, uh, you know, I, I would think that'd be used for more serious, um, implications if, if you're gonna consider a moratorium. I agree with Councilman, um, Beaver's, he, what he said about, uh, you know, maybe a gas station, once it was a service station, it probably is a service station, it's hard to convert that to something else with the tanks and everything. He's right. But for me, it's more deeper about a moratorium is a serious issue for somebody that owns property, wants to develop it. What are we encouraging? You own property, you want to invest in it, be able to do what you need to do, that's business. And we, we've talked about that before, as we're trying to develop different parts of our town. So, um, I'm not for moratoriums unless it's a crime issue or something, uh, personally.
So I think one thing that Councilman Beaver brought up earlier, which I thought was good, was the, it's a case-by-case thing. It wouldn't be, it's set in stone, you could bring it back at different times and revisit it if you need to. Um, if there's a, a, a need for it, or we want to vacate that moratorium or that, change that, uh, overhead number, whatever it may be. I know when it came up before, my suggestion was, that I think it was even to Ben, was that, you know, hey, can't staff at the counter, like, encourage these applicants to go a, a different route that, you know, we don't want to do a moratorium, but we're kind of tired of seeing certain genres of businesses, just because, you know, you're out talking to your constituents. It's, it's almost every time I'm out, someone says something about, uh, certain style of restaurants, gas stations and, and, uh, car washes. And they're fed up with it. And it's like, well, at some point, we gotta bring it back again, talk about it again, because it's something our, our public's bringing up. Um, and I, I think at some point, this is not something I thought of when I mentioned it before, was by asking staff to, you know, tell an applicant, if I'm at the counter and, and Justin comes in and says, hey, I want a gas station. Well, no, we really don't want to do that, think of something else. Uh, we're putting, putting them in an awkward position where they, uh, they can open themselves up to the liability and we can't not accept their application. Um, unless we give them some sort of direct order or directive from up here, which takes a little bit of that off of them. Uh, it probably is an unfair, uh, suggestion on my part when I said that, but my, that was my idea of trying to come up with a way without doing a moratorium. But, uh, I don't know how many times I hear it, but it, it's probably every time I'm out, somebody, at least once, will say something about it to me. Um, and recently I went to a, uh, funeral service for a past supervisor I used to work for. And in that conclusion to that service, one of our residents was there. He and his wife talked about gas stations, restaurants and car washes, and it was at the funeral. Uh, so, uh, I mean, and that wasn't even in the city. So, uh, you know, um, it, it, it comes up, so.
Mayor?
Sir?
Uh, could I have a recommendation to sort of maybe move the council towards consensus on this topic? Uh, you, you could adopt the moratorium, it doesn't have to last two years and certainly can't be permanent. Um, but you could adopt a short-term moratorium and direct staff to come back with a zoning code amendment that would make these two uses subject to a conditional use permit that either needs to be approved by the planning commission or by the city council itself. A conditional use permit would be exactly the case-by-case scenario that Councilmember Beaver was talking about. You would look at each application and you would decide, does that neighborhood need it? Are we getting our money's worth for that particular development? So that way you're not doing a blanket ban on them, but you would require that they be subject to a discretionary approval, either at the planning commission level or, or at the city council level. If you give us a very simple direction like make this a condition, subject to a conditional use permit, either at the planning commission or at the city council level, that's a zoning code amendment that we could prepare relatively quickly. So that moratorium period, that period where there's no applications permitted, would be relatively short. Ben seems like he has some things to add to this.
Uh, well, and I can elaborate a little bit more. So we do have, albeit very limited guidance in our specific uses for service stations and stuff, where we could add some additional provisions and, and kind of findings. So then that way, the rules spelled out for council in your justification for the case-by-case basis could be more defined. And then that way, rather than it being just, you know, we like this application or we don't, you have a little bit more... you have a little bit more guidance on, on the front end, uh, when an applicant comes by, we have a better idea of, no, this isn't gonna even meet the requirements, or, yeah, this is definitely, you know, meet some of the different findings that would be considered by city council. You know, you can proceed at risk, but that way, we can at least filter some of the ones so that they're not investing a lot of money in the front end on something that we already know could be a, a problem, you know, approval to.
Thoughts?
For the sake of time, I'll, how long would it take you to draft such a, uh, zoning code document?
Uh, if, if all we're talking about is turning this into a conditional use permit, uh, we could probably have the draft to the planning commission within forty-five days. We would definitely need one more extension of the moratorium. You can do forty-five days initially. Uh, the second extension can be up to an additional ten months, fifteen days. But we are not doing a specific plan for half the city here. We're talking about regulating two businesses that are well-regulated in every jurisdiction of the state. I think we could get something together pretty quickly.
I'll, uh, reserve my motion until after the, uh, public comment.
All right. Yeah, let's, uh, go ahead with the public comment, and then we'll do our.
Okay, Dennis Miller?
Vote, whichever way it goes.
Dennis Miller, three, five, eight, 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 Oakland Road, Ucaipa. Um, a couple of comments, and I'm not here to support or oppose this item, I'm gonna make that clear. But, uh, a little bit of a history lesson and some information that maybe this community and council is not aware of. I've, uh, been in several other communities and, and have seen reuses of car washes and gas stations. I've seen gas stations turn into, uh, drive-through pizza parlors. I've seen them turn into coffee shops, drive-through coffee shops. Some, some states where they have actually drive-through liquor stores, where they can drive through and pick up alcohol. So there are reuses. And when we start looking at, well, we got too much of this or too much of that, the market won't make that decision. And then in turn, if somebody's not able to be in business, then there will be a reuse of that business. And I'll give you a real good example to our community here that we have faced over time. Our community has doubled in size in what, the last twenty, twenty-five years? Okay? We had five banks in here, in the community, five banks. One up on the corner of California and Ucaipa Boulevard, one on Third and Ucaipa Boulevard, one on Second and Ucaipa Boulevard, one on Fifth and Ucaipa Boulevard, and one on, uh, Ucaipa Boulevard between Fourth and Third. Okay? They're no longer there anymore. Four of those have reuses. Okay? So water has seeked its own level there. Their industry has changed, buying habits have changed, service industries have changed. So we gotta look at that and say, what we see today may not be here tomorrow. So there are changes taking place all the time. So I believe, uh, Councilmember Woolsey spoke up, and, and Mr. Miller as well. If people are willing to go out and invest money in an entrepreneur and wants to open up a business and try to make a go of it, who are we to stand in their way? So we need to look at that and give them that opportunity. That was an American opportunity to go out and do that. So with that, this applaud them and support them, and if they don't make it, let's go out there and help somebody reuse that, uh, property and, and develop it into something that the community can use. But this not start denying people their opportunity to succeed. Thank you.
Is that the only one?
That was the only comment, yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, do I have a motion?
So I would, uh, request that council return to, or the staff return to, uh, to council a, uh, a, um, language for a conditional use permit for any type of further applicant for the service station or, or, uh, car wash. Um, and that we, as a council, approve a temporary moratorium owing to the fact that I watched a service station sit vacant for thirty years of my life on the corner of Bryant Street and Ucaipa Boulevard, because nobody would touch it. So I will make that motion.
Got a first, do I have a second? I'll make the second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Mayor?
Opposed?
Can we get a roll call vote on this one?
I apologize. Okay.
Councilmember Beaver?
Aye.
Councilmember Miller?
No.
Councilmember Woolsey?
No.
Mayor Pretend Venable? Mayor Thorpe?
Yes.
Motion failed.
Okay. Do I have any other motions that wanna be, uh, made?
Does the council want us to consider the conditional use permit process absent the moratorium? Would you like to see us put that together and bring it forward? Otherwise, we can, we can leave the code as is.
I have a question. I thought, I was trying to find it. I thought I read in here where there has to be four. Yes, votes?
Uh, yes, Councilmember, the motion failed.
It failed, okay.
So we don't have a moratorium in place. Uh, would you still like us to explore bringing forward an amendment to the development code, or we can leave it as is?
I move that we leave it as is.
I'll second that motion.
All right, so we have a first and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No?
Abstained.
All right. There you go.
Item twenty.
Is that you?
It is, and it is a public hearing, and.
Oh, I need to give the time, don't I? Eight fifteen. Calling, opening the public hearing, eight fifteen.
All right. All right, so tonight is a safety element update, and then ordinance number four fifty-nine and four fifty-nine urgency ordinance. And now this is all, um, kinda give a little bit of context. So the safety element is one of the seven required elements that the city must have adopted and implemented as part of its general plan. We did, if you guys remember, updated the safety element in twenty twenty-four, following our housing element per Senate Bill SB ten thirty-five. And it was to incorporate all the new state laws that had come into effect prior to its adoption in twenty twenty-four. And then in twenty twenty-five, the state provided new fire severity maps that covered the state of California down in this region. And the city's general plan safety element includes our fire severity maps as our fire safety overlay, um, in the general plan. And so that essentially made our maps in our general plan, uh, defunct. And so we have to update those maps in the safety element. And so just for a frank reference, this was old fire severity map overlay. Um, and then this is the new one with the new state mapping. Um, color's a bit more bright, because that's what the colors from the state used. Um, and so a little bit more impressionable, but you can see some of the, the distinct changes. Um, you know, by and large, you know, the areas along the periphery of the city are within the high fire severity zone, and then it kind of reduces out, um, as you get into the interior of the city, where you have more existing development. Whereas, uh, kinda before, it had similar approaches, but then you had some areas of the city that had the fire meat, uh, high fire severity, but not the very high fire severity in pockets of the city that have been since removed. And so key changes with the safety element is the fire safety overlay is updated with the new map. Um, now, this does result in more land, um, in the city. In the future, they'll be subject to the fire overlay building codes. So as part of properties that are in the high fire, in very high fire severity zones, they're subject to modified building codes, which have a little bit higher fire resistance, a little bit stronger building materials to address fire risk. Um, wanna note, um, these maps don't impact, uh, your fire insurance. So just because the state made new maps, doesn't mean that a person's property is subject to a change in their fire insurance. Insurance companies, though, already use a lot of the same methodology, so it could, you may have already experienced some changes as a result of that. And then as part of any new home sales, uh, they are subject to this disclosure, um, based on, uh, prior state law. Wanna note that the city's map, we can't reduce the fire severity zones as mapped on the state, um, but we also aren't expanding it, so we're essentially keeping it as this is what the state gave us, and so we're adopting it as is. And then the state new map also includes a moderate fire severity zone. And so we have designated it as our FR three, so we had a FR one for very high fire severity zone, FR two, which was the high fire, and then the new moderate is now FR three. And then I do wanna note that safety element is in review with, uh, the Board of Forestry. They may have some minor comments, and so as part of the recommendation is to allow a little bit of flexibility for those changes to be made, um, based on their recommendations, um, in terms of, uh, the MAP and ZIP or any other just kind of details to make sure that it all, uh, complies with, uh, state law. And then as part of it, um, you know, now that we would have the FR three, FR three zone, is making sure that the building code provisions also reflect that consistency. And so the ordinance number four fifty-nine and four fifty-nine U incorporate those. There's also a sister ordinance, uh, or provisions within ordinance number four fifty that will be coming, that will include the development code updates for consistency with the same language. And then the urgency ordinance is necessary because the state requires that all of this map be adopted by the city by a certain timeframe. And so with the second reading in the thirty days, we will not make it with just the ordinance four fifty-nine. So the urgency ordinance, to make sure we're there. And so that is essentially the, the provisions of the safety element and the new ordinance. Uh, we do have a number of resources for residents that are, uh, have questions about this, including a webpage on the Fire Hazard Severity Zones, um, uh, page on the city's website. And then there was also a good podcast with the city's fire chief. The QR link is here for any members of the public that are either watching or in the audience that also discusses in greater detail about those fire maps. And so it's a good helpful resource to go into the ins and outs of it. Um, but, um, you know, by and large, we're really just making sure the state says these are your new maps that you have to adopt. Our general plan has them in the safety element, so we're making sure that that's there. And then we're making sure the ordinance is consistent with that new moderate fire severity zone, and those are all the changes that are proposed. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Um, no applicant rebuttal, no public comment? Okay, close the public hearing. It is eight twenty-one. Any comments or questions for my colleagues?
Just one question. Didn't Redlands just pass something similar to this?
I think a lot of cities are going through the same process. So the maps were recently released, and so, um, a lot of the cities are going through, uh, their formal adoption process. Uh, I don't know if all of them had to go through the safety element update, because ours was incorporated. I've since amended the test to also include our most current state severity zone map, so that we don't have to update the safety element just because they update their map, um, to help save some time on the back end later on. Um, but, yeah, you're gonna see a number of jurisdictions that are going through the same process right now, um, as we are to make those changes.
Any other comments from my colleagues? Seeing and hearing done, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Got a first, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Beaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolsey?
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Venable?
Yes.
Mayor Thorpe?
Yes.
Motion carried to adopt urgency ordinance number four fifty-nine U in urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ucaipa, California, adopting the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection Fire Hazard Severity Zone Map for local responsibility areas and associated building code standards, and approving the introduction in first reading of ordinance number four fifty-nine with the same title.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, it's gonna be Mr. Fermin. We are opening another public hearing. Current time is eight twenty-three.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Good evening again. This item is regarding a resolution ordering the confirmation of the annual assessments for the city's Landscape Lighting and Maintenance District. Uh, the city's, um, LLMD includes fifty-eight separate zones throughout the city. These zones do include, uh, infrastructure that primarily benefits those, uh, residents or the property owners within those specific zones. Uh, that infrastructure, uh, includes landscaping, street lighting, the drainage systems, and also, uh, uh, multipurpose trails. And to ensure that the city does have funding to adequately maintain this infrastructure and also pay for the, uh, utilities associated with those improvements, uh, the, the property owners, uh, within each zone, uh, must be assessed each year. Uh, the assess, assessment amount is determined using, uh, the methodology that, uh, was in place uh, when the zones were annexed into the L, LLMD. Uh, there are three zones that were annexed prior to, uh, Proposition two eighteen. And for those, uh, those, uh, specific zones, the assessment amounts will not change. However, the other zones, um, their assessment amount is changed based on either the change in the CPI or five percent, depending again on the methodology that was established for that zone. Um, all zones are scheduled for assessment in fiscal year twenty-six. Uh, the city's LLMD policy, or the administrative funding policy does also allow for, uh, credits in those zones where there is a surplus or a balance um, in those, um, in the funds for those zones. Um, i- if a credit is due, the credit is applied to the annual assessment to the homeowners. Uh, attachment number five, uh, in your, uh, agenda report on page five twenty-six does include the proposed assessment amounts, as well as any credits that might be due to that specific zone. Again, that's attachment five on page five twenty-six. Uh, staff's recommend, recommendation is that City Council conduct a public hearing and adopt Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, ordering confirmation of assessment for the city's LLMD number one, and approve recommendations number two and three for this item. That concludes my report. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you, sir. Uh, no applicant rebuttal, and do we have any public comments? No? All right, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. It is eight twenty-five. Any comments or questions for my colleagues? No?
Thanks for blowing through that pretty quick.
Okay, do I have a motion? Got a first and a second. Madam Clerk, do you want to do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Beaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Aye.
Councilmember Woolsey?
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Venable?
Yes.
Mayor Thorpe?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Councilmember comments and reports? So we have a slide about the trash, uh, Burtec large item pickup. For those listening, there's some dates that, that involves, and it looks like it's all gonna be on August fourth through the eighth. So if they're listening, and you can't see the slide, you need to call a week ahead of time. So you need to call this week if you want your large items picked up. Also, we have National Light Out coming up on August fifth from eight to five. Or, let me try that again, from five to eight. There we go. That'd be an interesting day. Um, and then ribbon cutting is this Saturday at, uh, Cornerstone Bakery. And then, before I pass to my colleagues, there was a comment made earlier this evening by one of our constituents concerning, public's concern about cutting services to, uh, youth and programs, things of that nature. Just wanted to remind folks that are listening that budget cuts didn't come easy, and doesn't mean that some of these things won't come back around at some point in time. But we had to do some things to address our budget. So we understand that all the different programs are important, and, um, at some point in time, we'd love to bring those back. But we had to do some, had to do some cutting, so thank you for your feedback. My colleagues, questions, concerns, announcements, business reports?
Yes.
All the above?
Yes, some of both. Things that I have attended are the California League of Cities Joint Luncheon in Riverside and San Bernardino. There was a presentation about Prop thirty-six, which was very interesting. Uh, the, uh, OmniTrans meeting for the month, the SBCTA that honored Dr. Ray Wolf, who retired after thirty years of service. He will be greatly missed. He, he's a great guy. Um, the YMRA barbecue at Garden Works. Uh, for those people listening, if you haven't taken your kids there, uh, it's a great place to go. Help them out, support them, and just take your kids out and let them have a good time. I attended the Chamber Breakfast, where there was a presentation on the sales tax update. I also attended the Chamber Mixer at Del Mar the other night. I've been to two, uh, Ucaipa Valley Water District meetings. I've also attended the San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District, and the Sigma, Sigma Water Dis, uh, meeting that was held, held here the other day, and the finance meeting. Okay? Now, comment?
What you been doing with all your time?
Um, sitting at home on my couch. Well, I told you I had the time, so... Okay, um, when I realized that there was only one meeting in July, this really concerned me. When I realized that there was only one meeting in July, this really concerned me. Because when I look, and then when I looked at the calendar for the rest of the year, October, November, and December, we only have one meeting each month. Okay. I don't believe that that gives us sufficient time to address the city manners in a timely, efficient manner. I've checked with other cities. Some take one month off a year and go dark. They meet every month, there are two meetings a month. Whether they have much to do or not, they meet. Some take July off and September off. Not off, only have one meeting. And actually, when you look back at our calendar, we have five months where we only had one meeting. I, I just, I don't understand that. It just doesn't sit with me. So I'm requesting that staff prepare an amended calendar for the remaining months to schedule special council meetings during October, November, and December. And, and bring that back to the council for discussion. If you look at the calendar, there are dates that it would work. October the 6th, November the 17th, and December the 15th. And I'm also suggesting that when the schedule is prepared for next year, that maybe pick a month, one month, take it off dark. But we need to have two meetings a month. We need to be working on the city's business. And we can't do it the way we're doing it now. Look at what time it is. We've been here till 10:00, 10:30 at night sometimes, and started at 3:30 in the afternoon.
Councilmember Miller?
Hey, well, thank you, Judy. Well said. I just wanna report that I went to the NIOP, I think I'm saying it right, inland chapter meeting last Thursday. They, they had a donation. The chapter provides a donation in Yucapá 1, $1,500 winner. And you give it to the charity of your choice. I accepted, because my name was called as Yucapá winner. And my donation has already been designated to the Yucapá High School Athletics Program. So they'll be receiving $1,500. I wanna report that out officially on the record. And was glad to do that. And then I wanted to take a little moment to thank Lieutenant Scovall. He's been helping one of our business owners, Mr. Jim Fresh. He's been having a little bit of a problem with a, a gentleman that keeps causing problems around the business. And Lieutenant Scovall and his team had rectified that and dealt with the situation. And I appreciated Steve, you picking up the phone so many times. And Mr. Fresh is one of our longtime residents and business owners and a wonderful man, has a business in the uptown area. But thank you for taking care of that issue so efficiently with your officers. I understand the gentleman got into a tuffle with one of your officers, and that was rectified very quickly. So good service to our community. So thank you for doing that, and I appreciate it. And again, Mike, we're gonna miss you, but you're on to bigger and better things. Next time we see you, probably be promoted, so, and that's good for you and your family. So thank you for everything.
Thank you, sir. Regards to Councilmember Wolsey's request for that item to be brought back next, can we bring that back to the next meeting on agenda item to have a discussion about it amongst the colleagues here? You can talk about it then. I think that concludes our stuff. Turned city manager, do you have any announcements?
No.
No? Okay. So then our next regular meeting, scheduled meeting is August 11th. We stand, we are journeying, we will go in to finish up our closed session. The current time is 8:33.